Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, June 25th, Special Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting with the Groton City Council. Counselors present for the town, all are here with the exception of Counselor Parker, who is attending the TBCCA meeting on behalf of the town, and Counselor O'bury, who is on her way. Mayor Hedrick, thank you for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Thank you for inviting us. We have Deputy Mayor Beckford, Counselor Stanford, Counselor McCabe, and Counselor Depot. Counselor Ortiz cannot make it, and I think Counselor Carter is excused. So we have, everybody's gotta be here.
Okay. The microphones are awkward tonight, and I apologize. We'll have to share them as, once you are recognized, just pass the microphone to whoever is needing it. So our agenda has Calendar and Communications next. We're out of order, so we'll just go. Counselor Atwater?
In the past two weeks, I attended a SCARA meeting, and they are here this evening to give us a presentation. I attended the seat board meeting, and I would just like to say for my own ego that I rode in a 185-mile, three-day bike ride across Maine on Father's Day weekend as a fundraiser for the Lung Association.
Very good. Counselor Heath?
Nothing to report.
Counselor Baumgartner?
Last week, I attended a City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and nothing else to report.
Thank you. Counselor Schmidt?
No report.
Counselors of Perry?
Along with Counselor Baumgartner, I attended the dinner with Nancy Pelosi on Friday night. Very good to hear comments made and prospects for national movement. But that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
I attended the Beautification Committee meeting and also a Fitch Athletic fundraiser.
I am in the process of putting together the committee for the vacated school properties. I have the people who will be serving on that committee, with the exception of the RTM designee, and I will be hearing from Moderator Eben shortly on that. Counselor Schmidt, O'bury, Heath, and myself attended the zoning hearing, the first part of the zoning hearing. Here's Counselor O'bury. I attended the Cutler and Westside Promotion, so congratulations to all the eighth graders. And I wanted to thank Scott Bates for his work on the Connecticut Port Authority. He recently stepped down. He will be acting as a member of the board still, but he has done a lot for southeastern Connecticut in the capacity as Chair of the Port Authority. Counselor O'bury, we are at Calendar and Communications. Is there anything you'd like to report?
I'm here.
And we're glad you're here.
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Mayor Hedrick, do you need to?
We'll get to new business this morning.
Very good. Approval of minutes. Counselor Heath?
I make a motion to approve the 10/11/2019, maybe for whole minutes. Second?
Moved by Heath and seconded by Atwater. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Counselor O'bury?
I'm not sure, but I think I read that we were losing our assistant, assistant in the Public Works Department in the minutes. Am I reading the right minutes?
Yes.
I was, and I noticed that they wanted to take from within, but I was wondering, aren't we still gonna need a replacement there with some other position?
The minutes, at this point, we are just voting on whether the minutes are correct or not.
Sorry, yep.
But just as a quick aside, there are multiple positions in that department that need to be filled, and we can discuss that with the manager under Other Business, if you'd like.
I always forget that.
Make a note.
Anything else?
Just a couple of tidbits.
Yes. Counselor Schmidt?
On page 2, 5A, it should be noted that once the body has been formed, and then under the organization making decision, eliminate the S.
Is this in, can you give me a paragraph, please, so I can get that to the?
Yes, that would be the first paragraph on page 2.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing no further discussion on the minutes, all those in favor of approving the committee of the whole minutes of June 11th, 2019, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, so moved unanimously. We are eight counselors. Mr. Burt, for later on, under Other Business, Counselor O'bury would like to just briefly review the vacancies in the Public Works Department.
Okay.
Thank you. New business, 5A, 2019, 436 SCARA Recycling Presentation. There's no action needed for this. We have two guests with us this evening, and thank you to Counselor Atwater for inviting them. We have Dave Aldridge, who is the Executive Director of SCARA, and Rebecca Chapman, who is the Outreach Coordinator, and SCARA is Southeast Connecticut Regional Resource Recovery Authority. Thank you very much.
Why we call SCARA, it's a mouthful.
That's right. We'll turn it over to you now, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for having us. We look forward to talking trash with anybody that listens to us. First off, who we are. SCARA was formed in 1987 to finance a waste-to-energy facility. It's located in Preston. Those are the 12 towns that make us up, and this is a picture of the waste-to-energy facility in Preston. It burns about 700 tons of trash daily, about 263,000 tons per year. In the process, it generates steam, which drives a turbine that creates about 18.4 megawatts of electricity a year, or about enough to power 10,000 homes. We enjoyed a rather lucrative contract for the sale of that electricity while the bonds were in place, and we were able to move a lot of money into resource savings that we now expanded our operations to do a lot more than just trash. So we manage not only the trash disposal, we manage all the recycling and all the aspects of that, and I'll get into that a little bit later on. One of the things that we've been very successful with is our current tip fee for trash disposal is $58 a ton. It's the least expensive in the state. It's been the least expensive for about 15 years. SCARA currently pays $84 for that ton, so we're actually subsidizing about a third of the town's cost. When we look at solid waste, we look at a waste management hierarchy, and this is basically talks about how you handle waste in the most efficient manner as far as the environment goes. So the first way to reduce waste is purely by source reduction, just using less, or reusing things in their current form. Good examples of that would be taking clothes to Goodwill, excess food going to a food bank, that kind of a thing. The next level on the hierarchy would be recycling or composting, and that's where you're taking something and remanufacturing it into something else. So taking plastic water bottles and remanufacturing them into either new plastic water bottles or park bench. Taking food waste and throwing it through compost operation that would then give you fertilizer for growing new crops. The next down is energy recovery, which would be the waste-to-energy plant. That's a little further down the list because it's an end. There's no reuse to that. So once something goes through the energy process there, it's reduced by about 90%. There's some ash that comes out the back end. We do consider it to be renewable. Legally, it's considered to be renewable because we do generate electricity, but it's, from the environmental perspective, it's a little further down the hierarchy. And then the last of all would be treatment disposal or landfilling. The state of the solid waste systems currently, disposal is constrained. The state of Connecticut has about a 500,000-ton annual shortfall in waste-to-energy capacity for the amount of trash that we generate, and that's just in Connecticut. New England is also very constrained. Landfills are closing that we've utilized up in Massachusetts, two closed in the last six months, that are another 500,000 tons a year capacity that are going away. So it's really a regional issue for us. We're fairly landlocked. If you look at, I mean, we're not Texas with hundreds, thousands of miles of emptiness where we can landfill things. We really have to, our option is to ship whatever we have to dispose of out of state, and that's very expensive in several different ways. One, the transportation expense is very high. Probably with the tip fee, we're looking at somewhere $85 to $100 a ton right now. Probably will go up. And the increase in greenhouse gas emissions, I mean, you have to move something, you're creating greenhouse gases, which is obviously not a good thing. The state of the recycling markets, you've probably heard a good bit about this. In around 2016, China started restricting access to imports coming into their country for a couple of different reasons. Originally, they were, their consumer economies had improved to the extent that they were generating a lot of their own recyclable material, so that a lot of the capacity they had in their plants, they could use just with domestic recycling. And also, they started experiencing an environmental crisis. And so they, in a sense, shut things off initially by raising their purity standards. So they would basically say, if you send me a bale of plastic, it has to be 99% pure. Now, 2,000-pound bale of plastic, if it had half a dozen tin cans in it, that would be rejected. So that's the kind of level that we're talking about as far as purity. And it essentially shut things off. And that really happened at the beginning of this past year. The result of that is we had nowhere to send our recyclables, because more than a half of what we generate, we were sending to China. So our first reaction was, well, we'll send it to some other countries. So we sent it to Thailand and Indonesia, Vietnam, some to India, completely overwhelmed all of them in weeks, and they shut down. So now we basically have nowhere to send the stuff. So the commodity values for the recyclable materials have decreased in value since the beginning of last year by about 80%, currently. So it's a market that's in crisis. Now, the reaction to that has been, a lot of the processing is being what we call onshore, or paper mills that are closed down here are being reopened. Since the beginning of the year, there have been 16 paper mills around the country that are being reopened, and very exciting for our part of the world, because most of that's in the South or in the Midwest. They just announced a very large paper mill that's gonna be constructed in Albany, New York, that is going to take nothing but recycled paper as its feedstock. So the news is, and there's nine plastics so far that have been announced, plants that are being redone. So it's a several-year capacity to bring these things online to full capacity. So while we have a problem now, the outlook, at least, I'm glad to have Folguy, I think the outlook is good. I think that the markets will rebound. Whether they rebound to the extent that we had before, not so sure. There may be a new normal, but I do think the markets are gonna come back. So why do we recycle? Number one reason, it's environmentally the best thing to do. It's efficient use of our natural resources. So you can see just there an example of what it takes to make a ton of non-recycled paper. And a lot of times, it's less expensive to actually reuse what we have. A lot of that's driven by oil prices. If oil prices dip, I mean, plastics are made from petroleum, and manufacturers will shift over to the cheapest material they can to maximize the profits. If oil prices go up, suddenly the markets of recycling go up along with it. So it's important to do that, and then, as I said before, there are constraints on our current system for disposal. I mean, if you're not gonna recycle it, the other option is disposing of it, and that's difficult and expensive for us right now. And again, there are no landfills in Connecticut. We closed them when we opened the waste-to-energy facilities. The last municipal landfill that handles solid waste was closed about three years ago. So our options are very limited. So this is, I don't know how many people saw this, this was last June, the entire issue of National Geographic was devoted to the issue of plastics in our oceans, and I thought that's just the coolest cover I've ever seen. Next one. So what are the impacts of solid waste on our oceans? And these numbers are very broad, because it's very hard to pinpoint it, but according to some studies, you know, we're putting probably tens of millions of tons of plastic into the oceans every year. It gets there a lot of different ways. A lot of it comes from the fishing industry, but a very large portion of it comes from runoff from lands and just litter that becomes airborne, lands out in the water. 50%, and this shows the proliferation of plastics in our society, 50% of the plastics that exist in our environment today were produced in the last 15 years. And of those plastics that are there, 40% are single-use items, plastic bags, cups, an awful lot of different things that are designed to use at one time and is disposable. And on average, the lifespan, as you can see there, of a single-use plastic bag is about 15 minutes. I mean, yeah, I know some people use them when they walk their dogs and everything else, but realistic for what they were created for, you get your groceries, you take it home, now you've got a bag to get rid of. And when you consider the plastics, and that will take probably 400 years to decompose naturally, it's a problem. And to the extent now that the five main ocean gyres hold huge quantities of this debris, the largest of which is the Great Pacific Garbage Patch, which they are estimating is twice the size of the state of Texas, it's, and that's only really the beginning of the problem of it, because what plastics do in the environment, they don't decompose, but they do break down into smaller pieces. And what we see is that garbage patch is the visual part of that. But in reality, for thousands of miles all around that, you've got microplastics that are floating in the water that you can't see, that are ingested by sea life. There are estimates that it's contributing to global warming by trapping solar radiation in the water. There's a lot of bad stuff that happens with it. So it's really important that we start tackling the problem, and that's why you're seeing bag bans. The state of Connecticut, in the governor's latest budget banned bags. In that case, what they're gonna do in April, now August 1st of this year, they're gonna start assessing a 10-cent tax at point-of-sale for a plastic bag, which they hope is gonna change, it's gonna do two things. One, it's gonna change behavior. The other is, it's not gonna hurt the general fund of the state. I think they're estimating about $30 million for the revenue over the next two years. And then in two years after they start that, they're gonna actually have an outright ban on plastics. And, you know, for me, it's interesting. I like to go to Big Y over here to shop. I usually go in there every Saturday or Sunday, and this past week, I went in and probably 40% of the people were carrying their own bags. It was really stunning to see that. So, but that, the Styrofoam bans, the, a lot of plastic cup bans, all the single-use plastics are really becoming issues politically. Just to make a point, this last year, there was a cleanup on the beaches of North Carolina, and as they were cleaning up, somebody grabbed this Doritos bag, and they looked at it, and they're like, this thing just doesn't look quite right. It doesn't look like my Doritos bag. They flipped it over, and the manufacturer date was 1979. So that thing had been floating around for 40 years off the coast of Carolina. So that's just an example, a tangible example of the issue. So, plastic bottles, that's the thing that, you know, when I think of recycling, what goes in the bin, either that or cardboard or newspapers are the things I think of. Again, this gets to the proliferation of plastics in our society. In 1970, we were recycling, which is the blue line, about 50% of the plastic containers that were sold at point-of-sale. Today, we are recycling slightly more than that, but you can see that the top line, what's sold, has increased considerably. So in 1970, we were, where is it here? We were recycling about half the bottles reproduced. Today, we're recycling about 36%. And the rest of those bottles are either going in the trash or into the environment. And in either way, when we want another one of those plastic bottles to feed our needs, we're turning to petroleum mining to do it. So, and then as far as the curbside recycling impact, again, recycling is actually, the percent of what's recycled is the blue line, and that has actually gone down. The upper line shows the increase in curbside. So the curbside recycling has gone up, but as you can see with the other line going down, that hasn't been the answer. So there's either a lot, the people are thrown in the trash, or it may be going through the commercial process and getting thrown away there, which lends their souls to the topics of, do you have recycling available for public events, is it available in public places, that kind of thing. Next slide. So what are we doing? In 2016, the state passed the CMMS, the, it's a statute that deals with solid waste and how we're gonna handle it. They recognize that the lack of funding that we would have for capital investment to build more waste-to-energy plants, waste-to-energy plant would probably cost someone in the neighborhood of a quarter of a billion dollars to build. That's about what ours cost. So we don't, and there really isn't, and this is, I think, what DEEP just came to realize in the last year, is the mechanism that they had for infrastructure was the old CRA up in, what is now MIRA, and that used to be the vehicle for bonding all these big projects. Well, they haven't done that for 25 years. So there really is no infrastructure avenue for the state to go through currently, so it's very difficult to get any projects of any size. So their natural reaction was, well, then let's reduce the amount of trash. If we can't increase the amount of disposal, let's reduce the amount of trash, and they mandated, as best they could, a diversion rate of 60% by '24. And the way that they wanna see that done is through reduction initiatives, through better recycling, municipal recycling programs, emphasizing those. Unfortunately, since this happened is when the markets crashed, so that's working against us. And by diverting in other ways, like food scrap composting or aerobic digestion, as other ways to reduce the amount of what we dispose. Next one. So this is a question I like to ask groups when we go out. This is kind of ubiquitous slogan here with the three arrows, and the question I ask is, does anybody know who owns the intellectual property of that sign? And the answer is, nobody. It's in the general domain, which means any manufacturer, anybody that wants to use it, can put it on their packaging with no regulation. So if you see that, it doesn't necessarily mean anything. So it's a big part of the problem. So, again, we hear the items that we do put in the bin. I'll get into, I've handed out, we've simplified our message. I handed out a more updated, more updated card there that we use for recycling. If you'll notice, half of that card talks to what you don't put in the bin. And again, this goes back to, and there's a lot of confusion about this, people get very confused about what can and can't go into that bin. And the whole idea now is we're trying to really simplify that, make sure there's certain things that really, that go in there fairly frequently, but they really shouldn't be going in there. We're probably gonna be updating, not probably, we'll be updating our advertising. In the coming months, you're gonna see single-issue advertising, where we may have in the day or the bulletin, or actually in the, what is it, the free papers where we usually put everything now, but half-page ad that just says, "Don't bag your recyclables." That's it. It's really simple, taking the biggest problems and addressing them directly. What's the next one we have? So this is a recycling loop, and actually, I wanna update this thing, but it basically just goes through the supply chain of recycling. So you put bin, you put recyclable into the cart, into the bin, that's taken to a material recovery facility, or a MRF, we call them. Ours is Willimantic Waste up in Willimantic. Their task is to sort that and to sell it to processes for end markets. So what they're doing is they're taking all those mixed recyclables, and what I would encourage you to do when you look at something that's recyclable is you don't look at it as a can or a cardboard box, you look at it as a raw material for remanufacture, because that's truly what it is and how these guys look at it. So you'll see the little numbers inside triangles. That doesn't necessarily mean that it is recyclable. What that means is, is that that's the resin that was used to make that product. And what they're gonna do is sort down all these different things by the resin or the type of fiber, in the case of paper and cardboard. They'll break it down into various kinds of fiber, various kinds of resins, and bail that, and that's what goes to the next step, which is the processors turn the material into a commodity. And this is the part that I think going forward, we're gonna change this based on what's going on, because that's really a two-step process. The first step is where you take the plastic bottle, and you break it down, you get rid of any of the contaminants that are on it. The label would be a contaminant. The cap is actually a different resin than the bottle. In their process, they can separate those two resins and scrape it off and come down to the pure, say PET, in the case of a water bottle resin. That'll turn into pellets, and the pellets are what go to whoever's gonna make, manufacture a product. So in the case of China, they'll take our pellets all day long. They want them because they wanna make stuff and send it back to us, you know, and sell it to us. But it's that step before that that we need to onshore and do domestically. So we got a little video here to show you how, this isn't our MRF, but it's one up in Maine. So that's not trash, that's actually recyclables. So they come in, they're weighed, and then they're just picked up and dropped into a big hopper to put it onto a conveyor belt. A lot of manual process in here.
And that's all shredded paper.
That's what's flying around. Again, if that were to get into a bale of plastic, it's a contaminant. Makes it either low value or... So the very first step is these conveyors here, they're STAR separators, and what they actually do is they lift paper and cardboard up over the top, and the other items will fall down to another conveyor. Plastic, entanglers, plastic bags, actually, any kind of a bag that gets in there will get caught on those. It'll fill up that gap between those two things, and everything rides over the top. Biggest problem they have. So there's a lot of hand sortation. Yeah, here you can see there's like electrical cords getting wrapped up in there. There's smaller STAR separators. There are air jets that are used in here to separate heavier and lighter items. It's kinda like that game Mousetrap, you get all these different things going in different Again, a lot of manual work.
Those were window blinds, because those are plastic. They're recyclable.
So, so you got, yeah, magnet pulls out the ferrous metals. There's an eddy current that'll take out the aluminum. Glass is broken down into shards. And glass, right now, actually costs the processors $60 a ton to get rid of it. And glass right now actually costs the processors $60 a ton to get rid of it. Has no value. So you got ultraviolet light, you got... Our MRF actually sells those as a mixed bale, they don't separate them. So there's your end result, bales going out. So again, you know, you can see in that process, trying to attain a 99% purity is impossible. It's just not going to happen. So our advertising now, we talk about what does not go in there, because anything that doesn't go in, there's obviously contamination right from the start. But even things that you would think that would go in can be contamination, because they physically can't handle them, and we'll get into a little of that in the middle in a minute. What does not, we do have other ways of recycling other than just the curbside mixed bin recycling. At the transfer station, here's a list of all the things that will actually go there and be recycled. SCARA actually holds the contracts and pays for most of this. The, there are a couple of statewide programs, producer responsibility bills that have passed that have been very, very successful. Most recent was mattresses and box springs, and you'll see the numbers there, but producer responsibility legislation is where there's a fund created. At point of sale, if you buy a new mattress, I think it's a $7 charge that goes on top of that, it goes into a fund, and that fund pays for the destruction of recycling of all the components of the mattresses on the back end. A really, really successful one has been house paint. That's, it's just unbelievable how much of that we've collected, and about 80% of that actually gets recycled. Goes through a filtering process, there's a company called Amazon Paints that works it through, they have a palette of about six colors, and they actually sell that, they sell that back through like habitat stores, some municipalities will use it, it's like $7 a gallon. Electronics is another one. Here was our performance for the town of Groton last year, or through May of last year, of this year, of this year. So you can see there's 816 tires, we send those up to Maine. Fluorescent bulbs, better part of a ton, almost 46 tons of electronic waste, and we have a company that comes in and they actually break all that down into the components and recycle the various components of those. The oil and antifreeze, it's amazing to me how many people are still changing their own oil, but there are, and we actually provide a service where we come in, we collect not only at the transfer station, but we're also taking all the oil that goes through your transportation department. But we'll come in, we test it for PCBs, and we've actually had a couple of hits. And there was a town in northern Connecticut about two years ago that was cited for a PCB issue in the oil they collected, and they didn't collect it, they didn't capture it until it had been picked up and transferred into a couple of tanks, and it was almost a $200,000 liability for the town. So it's a good thing that we're doing that. We have a wood grinder, we'll show you a picture of that, we just actually left Groton last week. Propane mattresses, you can see almost 1,200 mattresses. So it's a lot of materials. The household hazardous collections, we'll get into that, but we track that by the number of cars serviced. So last year from Groton, we had 657. We have our collection here next month. Bring whatever you have, I'm the guy checking in, so you'll, I'll be dressed a little ratty, you may not recognize me, but I'll be there. We also do municipal hazardous collections, where we put it out to the towns, we've done this for three years, probably three years. And basically, we try to keep the flow out of the public portion, because this are very, very hectic events, but we allow police departments, fire departments, schools, like the lab chemicals, which are very, very expensive to get rid of, paper shredding, we had a electronics shredding event one year, and we set aside two days, the towns can bring it in at no cost to the town, we just take care of it for you. Fluorescent bulbs to the schools have really taken advantage of it quite a bit, helped their budgets out. It's been difficult to get the partition, participation, the participation's actually fallen off a little bit, so we're only doing one a year, we'll do one this fall, but I'd encourage you to have your departments look at that and take advantage of it. The next slide is our totals for what we do with all 12 towns. So we...
Can we just, just to go back really quick, because it really is important with budgets, for paper shredding, electronics, we will schedule that when we do the municipalities, we will actually go to the school and collect it all, it doesn't matter, printers, computers. When I go out and visit with different schools from all of our 12 towns, a lot of responses, "We're all set, we have a vendor." Well, they're also paying $5 to $1,000 for that service, we're not charging. We don't charge to do the bulbs, you know, oh, I'm sorry.
So we don't, we don't charge, and we'd be saving the schools $500 to $1,000. So it's just really important that you get this information out, because we had one school that had school chemicals, and they came to us and said, "It's going to cost us $10,000, what can you do?" By spreading it out over the towns, we're able to absorb that, what happens is hazardous waste is shipped in a container. So if there's one item, or if it's full, it's the same price. So it's kind of like a bulk savings, so, just trying to save money.
Easy to tell who coordinates those events, isn't it? Go ahead. So that's our wood grinder. We, like I said, we just finished here, I've seen 30-inch logs go through that thing and just choose them right up. One of the things that we're looking at, actually, the board, the SCARA board just authorized me to do a feasibility study on food scrap composting. So we're currently trying to find a site, probably 15 to 20 acres in an agricultural area, and what I would foresee is, collecting food scraps, it's less expensive to go through a composting operation, it's better environmentally. Probably about 40% of what goes to the waste-to-energy plant is actually organics that could be pulled out. Most of these compost operations run at about $40 a ton instead of $70, which is $70, $80 a ton for disposal, so they're good. And I think with that, what we're looking at is the potential of having a mulch yard with that, so that what we found is that, we go through a program where we go around and we grind everywhere, but when people will be dropping off in the spring, all their brush to be ground, and they're looking for mulch at the same time. So you have people say, "Where's the mulch?" Well, we need to grind it. So what we're looking at, the potential maybe is stockpiling here, and then being able to deliver compost, deliver mulch back out to the towns at the time the townspeople want it. So it just kind of smoothes that out, it's a little better, much better customer service. That's our flyer, which we handed out to everybody. As you can see, we're here on the 13th of July, two shredding trucks at that event, because Groton's a big one.
No charge.
No charge, no charge, no charge. This is our simplified advertising, you can see there's six items on the allowed, there's nine on the not allowed, but we're going to simplify that down. I just went to a conference that was pulled together by a couple of nonprofits up in Massachusetts, and it was specifically how to reduce contamination in recycling, and simplification of messaging was it, and they basically made the point and proved it through some of the exercises we do, that people's attention span will let you see about five things and remember it, so we're going to take it down to one. What Goes Where, we actually have a SCARA app, it's also on our website, and it's available, we're linked to the Groton website too, aren't we? Yep, so we're linked to your website. It's What Goes Where, and basically, it answers the question of how to dispose of whatever item you're looking to dispose of. So you can go, you pick out your town, you click on that, and it'll take you to a screen that says, "What is it you're trying to dispose of?" In this case, we put in shredded paper, and it'll kick back, and it will give you your options as to what to do with it.
And we try to give you as many options, so it's not just that it goes into the trash. We have found like bricks, some transfer stations don't take them, so we found other options for you. So we do try to do several other options for you.
Yeah, this is tailored to each individual town and what their transfer stations will deal with, but it deals with what goes in the recycle bin, what goes in the transfer station, what goes to hazardous waste, so it's pretty comprehensive. And if the item isn't in there, there's a box you can click that says, "Suggest," and that'll come through, Becky manages this program as well, and she'll go ahead and do the research and we'll add that to it. So we've created a really large database now, it's pretty comprehensive, but people will call an item different things, so you'll have three or four descriptions of the same item in there, but it's getting a lot better, and it's pretty dependable. In the case of the mattress here, you can see that that's a drop-off of the transfer station. So if you click on the transfer station, it'll bring up, and it gives you all the regs of your particular town, it'll give the phone number of the transfer station, the website, the hours, and it gives a Google map, so you can find it. We also have a waste, a trash sorting game that's on there. So there's an item, and you drag it down to whichever place you think it's going to go, and if it's successful, you get a little bunch of stars, if it's not, it blings back. A great story, we do an education at SB Butler every year for the science night, and was it three years ago? Three years ago, we just got in this thing, we're like, "Oh, we got to go over, put this thing up." So we brought over a laptop and set it up, we had a mouse there, and the kids were all walking up, and they were like, looking at it, like, "Why aren't you playing this thing?" And they're like, touching it, "It doesn't work." And they said, "Well, use the mouse." They're like, "What's that thing?" And I was like, "Oh my goodness." So time marches on, but when you get, when you're successful, you can actually build yourself a little park, and you can see we put the New London Light and Tall Ship there to make it a little more custom for us. So it's just a fun thing we have. And that's basically the presentation. Open to any questions you'd have.
Thank you very much, that was, that was very good, we appreciate that.
Good.
We'll alternate, so Councilor Zepary?
A couple of questions. One is on the trash-to-energy conversion. What kind of emissions do we have?
It's very, very low. The plant in Preston has been at a fraction of both EPA and the state's emissions regulations. They operate probably 50% below that, and it's already very stringent. I think a lot of people, when they see a stack, think of like a coal mill or something like that, and it's a very different, very different thing. The real high-tech part of what they do there is the emissions control. Most of what the monitoring and what they do there is that, first, they keep the temperature up around 2,000 degrees Fahrenheit, which, because that ensures that there's a thorough burn of what goes through there. They have a large baghouse that has these big bags in it that are charged with static electricity to pull particulates out, they use urea, they spray it through to take out nitrous oxide, and some of the other oxides that are in there, sulfuric acid. So it goes through very rigorous controls, and basically, it comes at the top of steam. That's the excess steam that, it's excess in addition to what the generator can use. So it's pretty clean. At the end of the day, it reduces what goes into the burn by 90% in volume, as a result, an ash goes up to an ash landfill in Putnam. SCARA actually has an ash landfill that's closed. If you ever go up, go across the bridge in Preston over to Tmontville, you take a right to go into Mahogan Sun, and there's a big hill that goes down to the parking garage, that whole hill off to the right is our ash landfill. And one of the responsibilities we have, ash is actually, when it comes out, it's very wet, because they spray it with all this stuff to get the, what they call fly ash out, what goes up the stack, they spray to get all of that out. So it's very wet, and the ash leaches over time, so we come in, we have an engineering firm that comes in that tests it for, geez, there must be 100 different chemical tests that we do on it, and it's very benign stuff. We don't even have to change the pH, and resulting, the leachate goes up to Norwich Public Utilities. So it's a clean process. It's not, it's a step, it's not as good as recycling, because again, it's the end, it's an end-use, you're getting energy out of it, but the actual products, those resins, all those fibers, all those organics that are going in there, they're going to waste, they're not going to a new product.
Second question is probably less significant, but just out of my curiosity. Why do you take paper, but you don't take shredded paper?
Well, if you saw in that, and we put that in advertising about three weeks ago, and we must have had 200 phone calls on that question. It's because it becomes airborne. Again, they can't handle it. The issues at the MRF have to do with things becoming airborne and the size of the problem. So a bottle cap, okay, if a bottle cap is on the bottle, it's recyclable. If the bottle cap is separate from the bottle, they're not going to catch it because it's too small. It's going to fall through, all that process is going to end up in the glass at the end. And that's where the shredded paper will end up there, and it also becomes airborne and ends up in those bales and contaminates them. So if with a shredding event, we put it into a truck that's captured, that goes to a place where they actually create a paper bale by itself, and then that's highly, it's very, very valuable recyclable.
And you can bring your shredded paper to our event, and we'll include it, so you can recycle it. The biggest education thing that we're doing right now is just because it's recyclable, doesn't mean it goes in the bin. But there are ways that you can recycle it the right way. So it's just trying to educate people on what does and what does not.
Plastic bags are a good example, film plastics, you can take that back to a retailer, and they'll have a box that they collect it, and they typically ship it to Tyvek for building materials.
So you'd encourage people to put the caps back on their plastic bottles before they put them in the recycling?
As long as the bottle's empty and clean, and...
What do you mean by clean?
Rinced out.
Rinced out.
Are there any city councilors with questions? If not, Councilor Baumgartner has a question.
So if you have, like, going to Big Y, I'm one of those people that has my own bag. But I, once in a while, you forget your bag in the car until you have a plastic bag. What's the best way, bring it back to the store?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, it's either that or throw it out. Again, if you throw it out, it's wasted.
Right.
You know, if it goes back, they're going to capture it. You know, and it's interesting, there's, the whole thing has really become very complicated. That conference I went to, they discussed the impact of e-commerce on recycling, you're thinking, what would that have to do with anything? Well, actually, it has quite a bit to do, because cardboard, we actually used to recycle about 90% of the cardboard that was generated, it was absolutely the best recyclable product that we had. I mean, it's just the best supply chain. With e-commerce, what's happened is, instead of those boxes going to a distribution center where they're unpacked, or a store where they're unpacked and captured, and all that clean cardboard goes back in a truck and never gets rained on or anything like that, and the capture rate was really, really high. Now, all that cardboard, and there's even more of it, because there are many more small boxes than just one big one, is going out to residential homes, and it's a very iffy process as to whether that's going to get recycled or not. So the recycling of cardboard is actually decreased by like 15% because of e-commerce. Another thing that's changing is how things are packaged. Dawn dish bottle, I mean, iconic, I mean, if you walk into a store from 100 feet away, you know, it's the Dawn, not Dawn dishwashing detergent, or detergent there, well, if you buy that and it's shipped through like Amazon, you'll have a bunch of different things together inside the box. Well, that plastic is rigid. If the box gets rattled around, something in there breaks it, everything in the box is damaged, so it's all trash. So the manufacturers said, oh, they came up with a new flexible packaging, which can squish in, won't break inside the package, it kind of looks just like a Dawn bottle, so the marketing end of that is still there, but guess what? That type of container has multiple layers of different kind of resins, and you can't recycle it. So there are a lot of impacts to the industry that are really changing it quite a bit. It's amazing to me. You had a question?
First and foremost, thank you for what you do. I think I was about five years old when I first went to your facility with my dad, writing... riding, you know, one of the haulers, and was just completely blown away by all the machinery, and, you know, since then have taken kind of a quixotic interest in waste, solid waste, and in particular diverting a lot of what we're throwing away to, you know, to recycling facility, in the case you have that as well, or looking to divert that, especially the organic waste, and composting it. And so you had mentioned about, you know, maybe potentially 30 to 40% of waste going to the incinerator as organic materials, and so, you know, kind of long-term, you know, in Groton, we don't have curbside composting, for example, but what do we do to kind of, you know, capture that, you know, the organic materials? So your food scraps and, you know, hypothetically turn it into energy as well?
Right.
In the form of anaerobic digesters?
We looked at a couple of different things. We own about 25 acres next to the plant in Preston. There was a group that came to us that looked at building an anaerobic digester, which is an in-vessel process. It's actually, instead of composting, which is an aerobic process, it's an anaerobic process. And essentially, what it does is it pulls the methane gas out of the, out of the organics, reduces the organics down to something that still needs to be composted, but they pull the energy off, they run it through a big diesel engine or some kind of engine and create electricity from it. Those plants cost $40 million. I mean, it's, you know, it's too much, too much for us. So what we do now is we sell compost bins at cost, and we sell a lot of them. They're $45. If you go online and look for compost bin, they're going to be around 100 bucks. We sell them actually below cost. We have a very nice little tabletop collection buckets, too, and we have bio liners that are bagged, that you can fill it up and just throw the whole bag in the compost. It'll break down, it's made out of a cornstarch material. But in the long term, I think, and what I alluded to earlier, is we're very interested in doing a composting, food scrap composting operation. I've been to a number of them. The one I liked the most was outside of Syracuse. It's a, what they call an aerated static pile composting, where there are these large concrete bins, and there are pipes in the bottom, and you take the compostable material and you put it on top of it, and you force air through the pipes, and it makes it break down about twice as fast. And it's a very scalable project, so you could start and then expand it. We've been talking to a number of different haulers that haul organics right now. There's one in-state over in Hartford, went up to Manchester, Massachusetts, and visited another one, which I really liked how they did it. So that's the direction I think that we see going. Right now, it's really just the composting. There is some option to, and this will sound wild, but to actually send it to a pig farm. New London Schools actually sends their organics to Pig Farm over in Waterford. I think they pay, it works out to around, it's inexpensive, I forget the exact tonnage, but it's a lot less than throwing it away. So that's an option. But for the average resident, I mean, that's not going to work. So I think what we're looking at is, again, we're looking for 15 to 20 acres, somewhere close to ideally a state highway, so we don't have trucks going in and out of neighborhoods. We want to isolate it in an area that's pretty much agricultural, because compost can smell. We're looking at that size lot, so we can put the operation somewhere where it's far enough away from anybody, we wouldn't get complaints. And then we would probably, the state of Connecticut passed a statute in 2014 that major producers of organics are mandated to send it to a facility if it's located within 20 miles. And there's a large swath all through the middle of New London County, big chunk of Groton's part of it as well, that is within 20 miles of every inch of the county. So we could go somewhere in there. Major producers, as of January, will be, they average about a ton of organics a week. So what we would do is look at setting something up, trying to get it going with those large producers, attract in school systems, attract in prisons, colleges, major institutions, hospitals, large hotels, restaurants. And once that's going, and we would have that going, then we'd open up to like a curbside. That's the dream.
I hope you consider Groton, you know, when looking to build that kind of facility, and more importantly, I hope we're not one of your problem municipalities right now, and we're doing our due diligence with recycling and...
No, no, not at all. Not at all. You know, it's, we really just started getting going on this, and I'm just looking around. I mean, if you know of a large parcel of land that the town owns, a large parcel, and you want to sell it, we'd certainly take a look at it. You know, the considerations we have, we don't want to be right next to a neighborhood of any kind. We have to make sure that we're not, you know, in, over any aquifers. Groundwater's a big concern with an operation like this. So yeah, we're looking at, we'll pay a pilot.
There's also a gentleman up in Hartford that just started a kind of a curbside composting pick-up. That's it, exactly. I heard about him at a symposium that the Legal Women Voters sponsored. And he's got that going, but he doesn't have any plans to expand at this point, because it doesn't make financial sense to him to come down to the shoreline. But there are entrepreneurs out there that are working on this. City councilors? Any other town councilors? Councilor Franco?
So this is not my expertise, so I wanted to ask some questions that, so how about a business, how would they dispose of their shredded paper? Because I know the collections are for residential, is that correct?
That is correct.
So I usually have to get rid of a whole year's worth of accounting, and I shred it all at work, and I ended up with like 26 bags of shredded paper. What do I do with that?
Good question. I mean, there's shredding companies that'll handle it for you.
Yeah.
And typically, that's the backfall that we have. We've never set up something that was commercial. The reason we haven't is, I mean, what we're doing is for the taxpayer, you know, so we keep it to residents. But I would contact a company like Shred It. They very likely may come by and pick it up.
Okay. So when my recyclable bins, I put the plastic, paper, and glass all together. I know some other areas, or it used to be in my area, it was in two different bins. You put your paper in one, and you put your glass and plastics in another. What changed, or why are some still doing it and some are not doing it?
Well, it's interesting. Originally, we had source separated, what they call source separated, which was bottles, cans, glass, one week, paper products, the fibers, another week. In the early 90s, in the entire industry, they felt that they were not getting as much as they could, because it was burdensome on the resident to have to go through that sorting. A lot of people wouldn't bother doing it. So they went to mixed recycling. And to quote Walt Kelly's pogo on a great comic strip, "We've seen the enemy and he is us," that's created a lot of problems. You see how difficult it was to sort that out, I mean, if it was source separated upfront. But at this point, going back is virtually impossible. The collection trucks that come around now, a lot of them use the rolling carts automated. I mean, that was specifically to save money on the hauling aspect of it, and the haulers will never go back to putting two guys in a truck, so that's why we have mixed recycling.
So I see all these different ways to recycle, and your hazardous waste, and like, my question is, like, and there's batteries and light bulbs and like daily things that some people have, but my question is, just for the average household, like, where do you put all these things, so you can bring out, like, how do you, how do people do these things? Like, you have all this stuff, are you supposed to just keep it in the area, and then...
Well, I mean, typically, typically what we get, what we get is just people that have it and clear it out. I mean, I have wanted to construct a brick-and-mortar hazardous waste facility, but it's, it'd be virtually impossible to get it permanent through deep. I mean, it'd be very, just not going to happen. So we do nine of these a year. We take in probably two tractor-trailers worth of material at each one. Invariably, we get a ton of calls after our Leger event, which is the last one, people missed it, and they have to hold it till spring. It becomes, I've had an issue, you know, with the Navy people a lot, because somebody will get papers and have to move, you know, what do I do with this stuff? And I say, well, if you got a buddy that's not moving yet, give it to him and let him bring it to us. To answer your question, there are no other outlets other than what we offer. So you just hold it, you keep it in a shed or your garage or whatever, and bring it to us when you have it. I mean, we have some people that come every event. It's just amazing.
They'll travel.
A lot of people, I think that you can tell that the real estate markets are heating up a little bit, because, so I do the intake, and I love to talk to everybody when they come in, just to kind of make it easier. And so many people are clearing out a house that they just bought, and people left stuff behind, or they're cleaning it out for a house that they're getting ready to sell. I mean, it's been really noticeable in the last year, and the volumes, we'll have people come in with a pickup truck and a trailer full. You know, we'll take it. We put on there 20 gallons only, but that's to keep the commercial guys out. We never turn anybody away. If somebody were to come from a town that wasn't one of ours, we'd take it, too, because they're trying to do the right thing.
And we do demographics of everybody who comes into a collection. We're asking them, what town are they from? We also ask them, how did you hear about it? And then we also have other notes, and then we keep track of how much items are cooked, you know, how much shredding we're doing, how much paint we're collecting. So, and we also ask, have you ever been to one of these events? And the census before we started getting this data was, oh, these are repeat. No, it's still at least 50% of every collection is new people. They just don't know, or they just bought a house. So the biggest thing is just getting the word out. We're your trash connection. If you don't know how to get rid of it, we will. Contact us. You know, we're reachable, we do education at the schools, we do large events. It's just getting that word out there.
Okay, thank you. Also, I don't compost, and I don't know much about it. So you have these bins, and you're going to put your food waste in there, and just as curiosity, I mean, can animals get into them? And also, what do you do with it after it just turns to soil? Is that what it is? And then...
Yeah, it turns to soil. It's, and we have instructions that we have with these. No, animals can't get in them. You put your food scraps in, and you cover it with a carbon source, like leaves, is a real typical one. So you put the food in, the leaves on it, you want twice as many leaves as you have food scraps. The, I don't want to get into the science of it, but it starts cooking, it heats up, the microbes start working their way through and breaking down the food scraps and the leaves, and it becomes a homogeneous mix, it's basically dirt.
And shredded paper.
And shredded paper can go in there. You know, the food scrap facility that we're talking about doing, I mean, you can put meat, bones, pizza boxes, all of that stuff can go in there, oils, grease, the stuff you don't want going down the drain, you'll take that stuff.
But for a homeowner, so what would they do with the actual, the soil, just, is it fertilized around your yard?
You put it in your yard, you put it in your garden beds, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you.
Councilor Aubrey, and then Mayor Hedrick.
I'm just wondering, the large containers that people use at their house when they're emptying it out, do you take those also?
Which?
The, what am I trying to think of?
Like a tote?
No, big ones. You know, when they bring them in with a truck and set it in front of your house, and then you fill it up?
Oh, dumpsters.
A good dumpster.
Dumpsters.
Yeah, that's typically a commercial business to do that.
Right, but do they bring it to you?
Yes, what they'll do is, they'll bring it to the waste energy facility typically. If it's, depending what's in there, if there's a lot of what we would call C and D material, like from demolition, that would, they would sort that out and go a different direction with it. If there were any recyclables in there, most of these guys will pull the recyclables out to get whatever value they can out of it. But typically, I think most of what comes out of a house goes to the hazardous, goes to the waste energy plant. All depends how big it is.
Yeah. All right, so I got a couple of questions. First of all, prices have gone up at the plant for recycles. Went from like $40 a ton to $70 a ton, I think something like that. It's cheaper, it's almost cheaper to burn it than it is to recycle it. So let's start there. One of the challenges that I think we all face here is educating people to know what goes where and what's accepted. Because you talk to somebody one day, this is accepted, next day, that's not accepted, and people are like, you know what? I don't care, I'm going to throw it away. Right? So it is a challenge, you know, for example, pizza boxes. Yes or no? Can you recycle pizza boxes? I was so, nope, you can't. I said, what if I take the round disc out, and there's no grease in the pizza box? Nope, can't recycle pizza boxes.
Whoever told you that's wrong?
So, well, what is it? Pizza box, yes or pizza box, no?
As long as there's no grease.
As long as there's no grease. But see, this is the other thing people don't understand. There can't be any grease on it, right?
Very little, yeah.
Well, it's got, right. But, and the same thing with the bottles. People don't understand that the bottles need to be rinsed out. Bottles and cans need to be rinsed out, right before they go into the recycle. So that's a challenge. Plastic containers, I see that this says one and two, but on the video it said one through seven, so what about three through seven? What's going on there?
It's recyclable.
Three, one through seven is recyclable?
It is. What we put on there is the vast majority of what comes in.
Yep.
And it's what the MRF will manage ways kind of dictated. But our contractually, we take all of that, and actually, by state statute, they have to accept that. There are certain, it's actually by statute what goes into the recycle bin.
But also...
Because one of the things that I'm trying to do over in the city is talk to my collection guys and say, we need to make sure the website's updated, get it on the social media. But I'm looking at something we did when I was in the Navy, keep it simple stupid, right?
Absolutely.
And that is, you simplify it, make it as easy as possible, so that we get as much compliance as possible. Right. Well, and you may even, you know, you may even want to simplify this. You talked about simplifying this even more.
Absolutely.
But how do people get this?
Oh, we've been, a number of different ways.
We have this on the website, so I can give this to you to put on your website. We have this available as a rack card. We've had several towns send this out with utility bills, tax bills. You contact me, I work with you.
Right.
And we get the information out. Now, the other thing, too, is, what we're trying to do is, the state is trying to get away from saying ones through seven.
Sure.
So that's why the What Goes Where program, we call it, you know, clamshells, food containers. So we're trying to emphasize, because like something that could be a seven really might not be recyclable. A foam, you know, a number five, like, or seven foam meat tray. So it is. Are we going to get everything? No. But we, our database is a constant living, growing thing.
Right. Well, one of the things, one of the things I'm going to do, too, is we're going to reference your site on our site, because I bet you that you go to most people and you just walk down the street, you know what SCAR is, and say, I don't have a clue.
Right.
Right? If you wanted to know information about recycling, where would you go? I would go to the town or the city website and find out what I need to do there. And sometimes, the information, you may find it's hard to believe, but sometimes the information conflicts.
Yes.
Right? It may not be updated, those kind of things. So again, you know, from my perspective, in order to get compliance and in order to help our residents, I want to try to get as much information out to them. That's why tonight is so important with what Mayor Granatowsky's done here, getting us, our joint meeting here to talk about this.
We, just one thing, we've encouraged our 12 towns to constantly link into ours. It is our job to make sure that our website is always updated. Sometimes, when you have staff and positions get cut, budgets are tight, you might not have a priority on making sure that information, or you might not have that information. So it's, why not just go to the source? You link it in, boom, there's all the collections. You link it in, boom, there's the app.
Something that we're just working on now, and actually, two or three of the things you brought up are going to be that one-item ad, like one month, no bags, another month, clean and dry, those kind of advertising. What is happening in the industry, again, I went to a conference a couple of months ago on the subject. A couple of states in New England are actually seeing a lot of success with a program that was put together by the Recycling Partnership. That was one of the two nonprofits that had the, that had the conference. And what we've traditionally done, there are a couple of different ways we get the word out. We educate. We educate. Historically, that's been going into elementary schools and teaching the kids and they go home and try to shame their parents into doing the right thing, which is only so effective. We've got a new program that I'm trying to get off the ground over in St. Martin High School, which is a whole sustainability curriculum, actually, which if we get it off the ground there, I'll be coming here next with it and it's very exciting. As far as the messaging, you're right, it needs to be very simple and that's what they do. The other thing they do is they emphasize what not to do and they do it in a nice way. So they've developed what they call an oops tag, if you will, and it's very simple. It might have six items with a box checked and when collection happens, you get, you do an audit there. So it's boots in the ground effort. But you go back, you take a look, you see somebody put something in there, you check off what it was, you put the oops tag in the cart, direct immediate feedback. Waterford's been doing some of this, East Slime's been doing some of this. If they get it right and there's programs that can, with GPS can track all of this stuff and we can work on doing any of those kinds of things that you'd like to. But that's what they've found to be truly effective. And then if you go back two or three times and the same place is still doing it, then you don't pick it up and the next week it's perfect. So.
Thank you.
Okay, unless other councilors have questions? Okay, we have two that have already spoken that want to speak again, so Counselor McCabe and then Counselor Franco.
Thank you. My question comes from, to make things easier for citizens, where do we get the recycle bins that we put our recyclable bits in? I moved into my house and I had a small bin that has a big crack on it, so I have like, you know, E.B. Green taped it up, but I'd like to get a bigger bin because I fill that thing up. Where do we get those?
Your hauler should have those.
Where?
Your hauler.
Oh, really?
Whoever does the hauler should be supplying that.
Oh, okay.
If not, we can get you one. One other comment I want to make too is another thing that we can do, and we've done it a couple of times, if you want to have an open forum like this, the high school or something like that, we've done that, I've done that a number of times. I, we, I should say, can't leave Becky out of that because she's integral to this. The only problem with those is the people that tend up, tend to be the people that want to do the right thing and already recycle and who you're really looking to capture a lot of the people that aren't as motivated.
Sure.
But that's available, I'd love to do it.
One more question.
Yeah.
The recycle, or the compost bins, I was pretty excited when you said you sell them. Where do we, where can we go to get that?
It's in our office, which is, I think it's listed on the, it's there, but we're at Gales Ferry.
Oh, okay.
Anytime between 9:30 and 4:30 say, and it's cash or check. We're not that sophisticated to have credit cards yet.
Okay, that's great. I just started composting this year, so I've been.
Oh, great.
I bought one of those barrel ones, but I plan on expanding what I'm doing, so.
We have works.
Awesome.
It has it listed as Seven Hurlebut Road, Suite 1, Gales Ferry, Connecticut.
Yep, right behind the CVS. It's an old school building.
Counselor Franco.
I was going to ask if you would do public presentation as well and you just covered that, so, thank you.
Anywhere, anytime. We've been to, or we've been mystic, the aquarium a couple of times, Seaport a couple of times.
Coast Guard Academy.
Yep, did the civics group at the Coast Guard Academy, so we've been around.
And then Groton, Mark, Wayne, the safety night.
Yep, done that a couple of times.
Have a cool jeopardy game where they come up, they answer questions.
Right, since we've been talking a lot about reducing plastics, many people have come up to us, or at least myself I can speak for, and they don't understand the recycling part of it as well, so they have a lot of questions.
They do.
Counselor Heed.
Just a quick question in regards to if we're considering a plastics ordinance, what would be the plastics you would want to target to eliminate from the stream?
Where do I start? Yeah, bags definitely. Plastic bags, I mean, the state is doing something, but there are a lot of communities that are heading there on top of that sooner. They're the biggest problem that we run into. I think from an environmental standpoint, straws are a real big deal, particularly when it comes to marine debris, they're real problematic. The next one I would go after, if I were going after, would be styrofoam. Styrofoam's, that's, it's very difficult to recycle, very few people will take it and it lasts forever in the environment. So those would probably be the three things that I would suggest.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to say I'm very interested in the sustainability curriculum also, I'm a teacher, so I'd be interested in talking to you at some point, I'll contact you about.
It's a fabulous program.
What age level?
I wanted to target high school.
That would be great.
Middle school and high school. And it's, it's a, how would I describe it? It's a project-based curriculum, so students, it's really cool. Students will, they'll form a group, they'll brand themselves, it's actually a class, it's graded. If you go to Seaside Sustainability is the name of the website, that's the contractor that I hired to come in and kick this thing off. So they'll come together and they do projects to, for sustainability in either the school or the community. And the curriculum, a lot of it, like they get the environmental piece of it and the sustainability through osmosis, almost because of the topic. But it really deals with them learning organizational skills, communication skills, presentation skills, teamwork skills, all of those kinds of things. And typically they'll go out, they will rework the recycling in the schools, the first one most of them do, they'll go out and support events around town. What you end up with is kind of an army of volunteers. I was at an event for Groton Open Spaces over a month or so ago at Haley Farm and everybody was talking about, well, how could we get some young blood in here to help us do the kind of work that we do? And I said, this is it. And I've talked to the kids at St. Martin about it, there were probably 15, 20 kids right off the bat, two administrators and six teachers. So I think it's something that could really get some legs.
Very good. Thank you again, Mr. Aldrich and Ms. Chapman, and thank you Counselor Atwater for connecting us.
Sure, great, thank you for having us.
We'll give you a few minutes to, do you want to recess for five? And then I can give everybody a chance to sit. So we're going to recess for five minutes. Okay, we are back from recess at 7:55 and we are on to item 5B, 2019, 435, wastewater treatment, public education portion of the meeting. And Mayor Hedrick this evening has kind of a show and tell, hands-on for us. I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. This is the interactive portion of the meeting tonight. For those of you that are in the audience, if you were tuning in for the discussion on anaerobic waste digestion in a wastewater treatment plant, you don't get that tonight, you get that later. This is the fun stuff. This is basically what not to throw in to your toilet. So what not to flush, don't put this in your drains, don't put these things, there's only, there's only two things that should go in your toilet, toilet paper and human waste, period, that's it. So what we're going to focus on tonight is, I'm going to talk to you about some of the problems that we have in the city and the town. So we have a basic list and councilors, you have this broken down and I don't know if we can see this, but you have it set up in chemicals, disposables, paper products, medications and slick substances. So I'll go through these real quick, or quickly rather, and then I'm going to show you a demonstration. All right, chemicals, solvents, paints, turpentine, nail polish, pesticides, don't put any of these things in the water, don't put them in your sink drains, don't put them in your garbage drains, don't put them in your basement drains, don't flush them down the toilet. These things cannot be removed or removed easily through our biodegradable process that we use in the city and town. So what happens is it gets into the, it gets into the water stream and then it contaminates the water stream, which is not what we want because it gets, it gets into the cycle, gets into our food cycle, we don't want that. Disposables, cat litter, feminine hygiene products, cotton swabs, food waste, condoms, bandages, dental floss, cigarettes. So you don't want these kinds of things to go in there too. The reason, and I'll demonstrate some of this, is that the process is not designed to remove these things. It's a chemical process where we have biologics that basically anaerobically digest, anaerobically digest the waste matter and then it gets filtered that way. But for example, cigarettes, all the chemicals that are in the cigarette are concentrated in that filter. And so then that gets into the waste stream, not only does the filter swell and clog, but it also, the nicotine and the other carcinogens that are in that cigarette filter now get into the water stream. Dental floss, bandages, we'll get to in a minute. Cat litter, I have some cat litter, I'll be showing you in a minute. You wouldn't put cement in your toilet, why would you put cat litter in there? And I'm going to demonstrate this in just a minute. Paper products, flushable wipes. I bought a packet of flushable wipes, it says, these are flushable wipes and everybody sees it says, it says they're flushable, so I must be able to flush them down the toilet. But if you look at disposal instructions, it says, do not flush if violates local rules. Our local rules for the town and the city are not to use any kind of flushable wipes in, put them into the toilet because, one, they don't break down like you think they do, they don't break down, two, you get into the clogs and I'll talk about clogs in a minute. Again, feminine hygiene products, disposable diapers. I'm going to show you a diaper here in a minute. We'll go through the diapers. These are basically Swaddler diapers, they're cute, right? Oh, let's look how cute they are and then, oh my gosh, where did that come from? And then when you quickly throw it down the toilet, you don't want to do that and I'm going to show you why in just a minute. It is amazing the amount of water that will, that will be contained in a diaper and what's holding that water. And once we get to that, that's going to, that's going to be the primary reason you don't want to put this, you don't want to put this in the toilet. Paper towels, napkins, tissues, coffee grounds, filters, those kinds of things. Medication, there's a whole list of medications. So used to be, years ago, everybody said, dump your medications into the toilet, flush them and they'll go away. The problem with that is our anaerobic process and our aerobic process does not get rid of the medications, so therefore it gets back into the water stream, it gets into the food cycle and you don't want to do that. What you want to do is, I saw this out in the vestibule and this is, take it to the box. Both the city and town police departments have a box to recycle all of your medications. So please bring your medications to either the city of Groton or the town of Groton, well, to take it to any police station and they will have a box for disposing. Slick substances, motor oil, gas, excuse me, motor oil, gas, antifreeze, cooking grease and cooking oil. For those of you that are health conscious, you know that animal fats, what happened is, they basically build up in your arteries and it constricts your arteries. So if you look at the waste system stream that we have here, our pipes are our arteries and what happens is the fats congeal and they help clog up. Not only that, when the fats and some of these other things that shouldn't go in there and they all get together, they produce a thing called a fat berg. And it's basically like a huge iceberg that's in the system. And some of these in some of the larger cities have been several hundred pounds. Now, we recently had a fat berg in the town, the city hasn't had one, but, I mean, we're due for one. And basically it's fats, oils and greases, right? Don't pour them down the drain. When you finish cooking, either put them in your waste or you collect them until they harden and then throw them away. Okay? That's the general, that's just the general categories that we have. So we'll put this down and now we will get to the interactive portion and explain why this is important.
Joanna, you're his assistant.
No, 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 you guys are all involved in this. What I have here is a simple ball jar of water and where everybody gets to play. So these are cotton swabs, standard cotton swabs you get to, for whatever reason you do it. Some people for makeup, some people for other things, some for hobbies, those kinds of things. Let's put that in the water.
Pass it around.
And pass it down to somebody. When you get this, just shake it gently, you don't have, you know, it's not shaken or stirred, it's just you're doing it gently. So there's cotton swabs. So the next thing is toilet paper. I have three kinds of toilet paper here. Now, the toilet paper, well, and the reason, no. I have one that I have for my home, I have one that I got from the city and one that I got from the town. Okay, but the point's going to be.
How do we know which one's which?
It doesn't matter. The point's going to be what happens to them.
No, I think they want you to hold it. Oh, and you're.
No, yeah, you're holding, we're going to.
You're holding it and playing with it. So everybody's getting one, I think.
All right, we'll pass that down that way.
Hold it to you.
And I'm trying to be, I'm going to be quick.
One of the three toilet papers.
Right, one of the three toilet papers. You don't do all three, you only have two hands. Unless you're hiding something I'm not aware. Make sure the lids are tight. Okay? Here's something else that is interesting is it talks about cotton swabs. And not cotton swabs, cotton balls. A lot of people will use this, a lot of women use it for makeup removal and things like that. Just throw it in the trash. What you find when you actually deconstruct one of these things is that it's not a cotton ball at all, it's rolled. So you get this long roll and what happens is, once it goes into the waste stream, into the pipes, it gets all out like this and wraps around other stuff and it gets wrapped up. You're going to see this in a moment when I put this in the water and you're going to see that this doesn't break down. I can put this one in there because.
It's going to make a bit of a difference.
All right? Next thing is, these things. More makeup removers or whatever you use them for, but what you find is that they are quilted, so that means they're sewn and so they're not going anywhere. You can pull, this one did pull apart, but once you put it in the waste system, don't forget, just swirl these around. Okay? Here's one of my favorites. So you got dental floss. So you got dental floss and everybody's like, well, wait a minute, one little piece of dental floss, how does one little piece of dental floss hurt me? Well, one piece doesn't hurt you, but when you got this much and it all binds together, suddenly you have a bird's nest of dental floss that gets wrapped around everything else. So let's put that in the water, let's see what happens there. I know they answered all these by the way, because I played this weekend. Hey, where do I need to go with this?
That one.
Okay, we'll get this.
That one's for you, Joe.
Okay? Here's a paper towel, standard paper towel that you use. It's not anything fancy, it's not one of the heavy duties, it's not one of the cheap, you know, 100 rolls for a dollar. It's just a standard paper towel. Which way do we go? This way? Okay, so we got that, what's next? Here's something else. You get, these are disposable wipes, so let's talk about those. Disposable wipes come in mini format. It could be hygiene wipes, it could be baby wipes, it could be the wipes that you use to clean your vehicle, it could be for the glass, it could be for the car, it could be, you know, different kinds of things. Here's the wipes. Now, what you find when you examine the wipe and you look at it, there are actual fibers in this that are plastic and they're interwoven in here, this is why they're so tough, but this is why they don't break down.
Yeah.
And then.
Did you say those are biodegradable wipes?
Yeah.
Biodegradable wipes?
Yep, they're not biodegradable. Well, see, and that's the other thing, you'll buy a package and it'll say flushable. So let me be clear on something. You can put a golf ball in the toilet and push the handle and it'll go down. So yes, a golf ball is flushable, it is not biodegradable. So just because you can pull the handle and it goes away, I mean, don't forget about[1784.54] the great Lego disaster of 2014 when the kids just kept throwing Legos in there until they were done. So, now, this one's kind of interesting, this one has potential to get some attention. So this is kitty litter.
Andre wants to hold this one.
Okay? Andre, since you asked for it.
It's very absorbent.
I should probably put the lid on. Well, and that's the point, that is the point with kitty litter. Why do you have kitty litter? You have kitty litter to absorb, right? So the kitty litter, here you go, you're not going to shake that a lot, but you're going to get my point in a minute. So, the kitty litter is a, the kitty litter is a problem because it goes back to, you wouldn't put cement in your toilet. So why would you put, why would you put kitty litter? Because what happens is, kitty litter sucks up the water and it causes clogs because it mixes with everything else, and now you've got clogs. So, I want to go back to the diaper. These things are impressive. When you put...
It's got an infomercial.
You put the water in here, and that's amazing how much, how much water these guys hold. You have to have a little bit of patience, though. Okay, so let's keep talking about, all right, are we shaking? You guys aren't shaking. Shake, you don't...
Where's the toilet paper?
What happened to the interactive portions? Okay, send the toilet papers back up here to me, please.
David, did you go ahead?
Okay, we're going to leave the diaper there, we're going to leave the diaper there just for a minute. Okay? Let's see the toilet paper. Is that a toilet paper? Okay, so let me give it one last shake. What is it?
I don't know what that was.
We can't have four toilet papers.
Yeah, that's what I saw.
You only have three. All right, well, I'll be able to tell you in just a minute. Okay? So what happens is, the toilet paper just falls apart. And, here's another, let me put this one away.
Where's the cotton? Oh, Reggie has the cotton.
So this is the toilet paper, you can see here that it is just falling apart and it's just mush. And that's just from being in a, that's just from being in a jar, just being shaken for a couple minutes.
John, where's yours? You have toilet paper?
This looks like, okay, this is the paper towel.
John.
I think so. Well, when I, when I, when you pass them down...
John. No, Reggie has the cotton swab.
Well, whatever this is, it did not break down. Okay? So so far, the only thing that has broken down has been the toilet paper. And what you find is that, you know, it's just, it's just this, it's mush. It is absolutely mush.
My plumber says you've got to use Scott.
Well, you can use whatever toilet paper you want.
Yeah, he has a full carton ring.
I mean, toilet paper's toilet paper, when it goes through things. So now, so, see this? Remember that pint of water we put in there? There it is, it's in this, it's in this thing here. Okay? So, we're about to do something that you don't normally do, which is you deconstruct the diaper after it's full. Right? You don't do that. I don't recommend doing this at home either. But what I'm about to show you is important, because if you look at the diaper, go back to the original diaper that we had. What do you got? You've got plastic, right? Plastic doesn't dissolve and it gets away. And then you've got the paper here, and then you've got the sticky parts of this, it's just, it's a disaster. But what you don't see, until you open this up, are the gel part.
Your scissors were having trouble even getting through the top layer.
Right, I was having trouble getting through the top layer. Now, you probably can't see that very well. I'm going to pause here for a second. Okay? Now, I'm going to cut this so you can see the gel. Okay? There's your gel. Okay? It's not caviar, that's the gel. So, two, you've got, you've got a couple problems with that. One, it doesn't break down during the normal process, and two, I don't know what the gel's made out of, I didn't, I didn't pull a safety data sheet on this to see if there's any issue, if there are any chemicals in the gel. I wouldn't think there'd be any chemicals that'd be harmful because it's against the baby's bottom, but that might be a problem into the water supply. But that's why, that's why, that's why you don't want to, want to do this. Now, we'll tell you, the tape things are real cool on this, so. I mean, you've got your own little bundle.
Bundle of joy.
All right. So let's pass the other things through, let's take a look at them, see how they fared.
You want the kitty litter first? Here's the kitty litter.
Let's take a look at the kitty litter. All right. So what do we got? I have a little spoon here.
Spoonful of wet kitty litter.
So, here's what you've got. I mean, the kitty litter is solid now, it is, it is very thick, and this would, left to its own devices, this will harden up and this causes a problem into our, in our systems. So this is why you don't want to put that in there. The one nice thing, it smells good, that's all.
Here's the paper towel.
Okay, let's take a look at the paper towel.
Pretty much intact.
So we take the paper towel, squeeze it out a little bit. We open the paper towel, and it is no worse for wear. Okay? No breakdown on this.
You could dry it out and use it again?
You could, you could dry it out and use it again. Anybody needs to wipe, anybody needs to wipe gel off their hands, they could probably use that. Okay? This is...
Is that the wipe?
This is the wipe? I think it's the wipe, what's this? Oh, it's the cotton, okay, thank you. So this is the wipe. You see, the wipe, wipe's in better shape than the paper towel. Actually, the paper towel, you could put your finger through it if you wanted to. The wipe, you're not doing that. I mean, it's, you're pulling, it's there. So this is not breaking down. All right? Let's look at the Q-tips, or correction, cotton swabs. I'd hate to see Q-tip stock go down because of this. Okay? As your cotton swabs, you're starting to get a little bit of the cotton coming off, but they're intact. Right? No damage, and this is cardboard. Somebody told me, "Well, the cardboard's going to dispose." Well, the cardboard's wet and it's starting to unwind a little bit, but it's, it's, it will not go through the process. All right? So, then, we get to... This is the cotton. Squeeze it real quick, but this is what the cotton looks like. So, I now know what those other things were that we didn't know what it was. Those were the makeup remover pads.
Oh, okay.
Okay? And then lastly, this is the nest of dental floss. And the dental floss is just as slick as it ever was, because dental floss has silk fibers in it, it has rayon in it, it has other things that are in there, and it doesn't, it doesn't dissolve. So, that's one of the problems. Now here's, I've talked to people about this when I was preparing for this, and they're like, "Well, you know what, it's just one, I'm, I'm just throwing one paper towel in the trash." Okay?
The trash or the toilet?
Or the toilet. But here's one, then here's two, here's three, four, and so on. Multiply that by the number of households that you have in the city and the town of Groton. So, that is why this is problematic, because it goes into the toilet, it swells, it ties up with this other stuff, and you get, and you get big clogs. So the other thing that I, when I was doing this and preparing for this, the question was, what am I trying to do here? Why am I doing this? And, and part of this is the education component to the city and town residents, and then the question is, why is it important to me? So I want to read a couple, these, this is from the May, this is from my, my June utility commission meeting, but in May, they removed 24,250 pounds of sludge. So the sludge is not only the human waste, but also all this other stuff. And every month, there were, in the month of May, 11 loads were removed from the thickened sludge tank with the average load of 4.3 percent, that's the moisture content in the sludge. And we sell that, we have to, we don't sell it, we have to pay to get it incinerated. Okay? The other problem that they have is that they have pumps that get clogged and, and the same thing. So, when you go back to why, what am I trying to do? One, we're trying to educate people on what not to put into the toilet. So basically, the only thing you really want to put in the toilet is toilet paper and human waste, period, nothing else. And then you say, "Well, why is that? Why, what is the motivation? What is the motivation to the residents? Why do they want to do this?" Well, you can look at it from the environmental aspect if you want, and, and that's probably good enough for some people, but if that's not good enough, let's talk about the economic impact. So the economic impact is this. If we continue doing what we're doing now and putting this in there, you're going to have blockages, you're going to have clogs, you're going to have damaged pipes, you're going to have damaged sewer systems and those kinds of things, and that's going to cost money, that's going to cost money to repair. So that means either your fees are going to go up or your taxes are going to go up. So, that should be a motivator there. If that's not enough motivator, let's say, for those of you that are out there that have sewers, and the city has about nine or 10 people with sewers, not sewers, septic tanks, and the town has several people with septic tanks, you're putting all this into your septic tank, it's, it's not going anywhere, you're going to have to pump your tank out, and that's going to cost you money. So let's say you're hooked up to a sewer system, and you say, "Okay, why do I care?" Well, you care because if you get clogs, it can back up into your basement or back up into your house. And I'm sure that's going to get, get your attention. And then people say, "Wait a minute, I'm a renter and I don't pay my utilities, so why do I care?" So let's go about it for that, from that aspect. You should care because if your landlord has to pay for all this, the cost is going to be passed back to you. And, if you're a renter and you have, you caused the clog that backs up into the house, you're going to probably be responsible for that. So that can get expensive. So there's lots of reasons to, to follow the list of whatnot to throw in to the, into the toilet. So that's why, that's why I decided to approach it this way, because I could read you a list, and we do that a lot, but when you actually see it and you see what the difference is and see the impact, you actually got to see what broke down, what didn't break down, and the problems it could cause, that could get you here, and therefore, that's where you get change. Right? We want to change the behaviors. And one of the things we're going to start in the city is probably once a quarter, I'm going to start talking about recycles and about whatnot to flush into the toilets because there are certain areas that we have some issues with. But that's just, so, thank you for your time and your patience tonight, council members and Mayor Granatowsky.
Well, thank you. Does anyone have questions for Mayor Hedrick? Council Freyko?
So I know this is about what you can flush, but it also mentions in there what not to put down the drain. So what about a garbage disposal? And I know it says in here, "No food waste," but there is garbage disposals.
Yep. So, you have garbage disposals, it, the recommend, so, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you two counter things. The first thing is, if you use your garbage disposal, run your garbage disposal for a couple minutes, after you, run the water, use the garbage disposal, run the water for a few minutes after, make sure you get flushed, so that you don't clog up your lines. Now, on the other side of that, I'm going to ask you not to use your garbage disposal and say, "Why do I have a garbage disposal then?" I don't know, I have one too, and that's a challenge. But the food does not get digested. And we heard, earlier tonight, we heard of another way, which is composting, right? You could use your food scraps and you could compost, and then you could make dirt for, if you have gardens, if you, you may have vegetable gardens, you may have flower gardens, or you could put it on your grass. So, that's a way to do that. I mean, I, I told you, I was going to tell you two different things.
Thank you.
Anything else? Sorry. At your line.
You've got to take this off here.
Why?
He said it doesn't mean anything. That was part of his presentation.
Well, it doesn't mean anything to him.
Okay. The mayor has spoken.
Well, no, I mean, it's, it's on there, we could take it off, I don't care, we can take it all off.
No, 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 no.
Well, I've got all the information.
So then, to be brief and concise...
It's not regulated, that's the...
Right.
Only two things should go down your drains?
Well, down the toilet.
Down the toilet, and those two things are?
Human waste and toilet paper.
So even if it says flushable, that just simply means it's going to go away. It will no longer be in your toilet, but that doesn't mean it's not going to cause a problem. It will still be your problem, just it could be a much more expensive problem for you than simply disposing of it in your trash.
But I will tell you on a personal note, several years ago, with the older style toilets, that somebody flushed some cotton swabs, and I had to go in there with a snake in order to clear it up, because they, they went, they end up going this way, and then the toilet paper hung in there and it clogged it up, and then we got a gift, we got a geyser. So, and because, you know, I've done this before, I, you know, I know how to clean this, I'm the one that got asked to go to it.
And there's a, there's a video online from several years ago that Chris Hayes went to the New York City plant, and they were actually showing, like every half hour, they have just those wipes, there's just massive amounts of wipes that they have to remove by hand. So it's, it goes out of your toilet for sure, but it's not actually decomposing, so. Thank you very much, we appreciate this, it was very, very enlightening. All right, so, that is all that is on for the joint meeting. Did you have anything else for your council?
Ma'am, so, we can take a motion to adjourn?
Yes, so.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Burke?
There was one question that was being brought up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was requested to give an update on the library.
Can... Oh, the sale.
While everyone's here, I was requested to give a quick update on the Grotten Sale Library location, where that's at. The House bill passed the House to allow for the sale of the right-of-way in front of the Library Senior Center. However, it did not get taken up by the Senate, so at this point, that's dead. But the Department of Transportation is working with us, we're working through their process. They'll be in town Friday morning to meet with a group of us, including the mayor, several others from the Grotten Sale Committee will be there on site. Chris Conley, Representative Conley is going to try to be there if she can. I'll know a lot more after Friday as to where it stands, and I'll, my weekly update, I'll shoot the information out.
Thank you. Great.
Okay. But I just think that some... Some councilors were concerned that the city council is also in favor of the new location to the library area, that they wouldn't want to be stepping on your toes.
Okay. So, we've addressed this at a council, committee of the whole. I addressed it with the council, we got a consensus that was sent back to this council. So what more do you want to hear from us? Do you want to hear a yes from each and every one of the councilors? Or what is it?
No, we weren't aware of that.
What do you not want, what do you want to hear?
You're happy?
Yes.
I'm happy. Do you, do you have any issues?
No.
I mean, I, I would love to see it in the city, but, I'll speak for me, not for the councilors, I'd love to see it in the city, but situat, the situation has evolved such that it's not going to be able to be there. So this is the, this is the place that was selected by the Site Collection Committee. So the Site Selection Committee picked this place. Okay? I was on the Site Selection Committee, I agreed with the selection of this location, and I have briefed the council. So, Deputy Mayor Beckford?
I have no comment.
Council Sanford?
The location's perfect.
Council Epa?
Fund me.
Okay? Is that enough, or do you need something else? Because I'll give you whatever you need. I'm not going to give you a resolution, because I don't think it meets resolution, I don't think we need to do that, because the Site Selection Committee for the Sale Committee is the one that picked the spot. Not the town, not the city, not Town Council, not City Council, but the Site Selection Committee.
Council Heed has a question.
I'll use both since I have a soft voice. Just kidding. So, it was taken up by the House but not the Senate. Is there any idea why? And did we contact all three of our representatives, or is that something that we should do in the future?
They were all three aware at the start. I know there was other bills not taken up by the Senate, so, for various reasons, but I wasn't given a definitive reason why this one wasn't. But, the DOT has been very receptive and friendly. They were at the hearing for the bill in the House, in the committee, and they seem to be willing to work with us.
Very good. Council Obray?
I just wanted to thank, it was I that brought up the question, was the city happy with the location? So, thank you for clarifying that tonight. We just have been doing so well together. I didn't want to have any animosity about the selection area, so, that's good.
Speaking for myself and for the council, we agree. This has been a good relationship between the city and town councils. It is something that we have worked on. I meet with Mayor Granatowsky once a month, I meet with Town Manager Burke once a month. We also communicate several times a week on other issues, and my department heads are reaching out to town department heads, their counterparts, to look for collaborative efforts and things where we can work together. And if I have issues that appear to be, that come up, I'll say, "Reach out to your counterparts, see what the town's doing," as well as maybe other locations too, to find out what other people are doing, but, but we are doing everything we can, all of us in this room, to nurture a good longstanding relationship between the city and town.
That's great.
I agree. Thank you very much, and thank you all for coming out again this evening to meet with us. So, next quarter, back, back at your place.
So, do I need, I need a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second.
Okay. Motion's second. We're adjourned.
Very good. Thank you very much.
I'll take my toys and go.
Shall we recess to, we'll recess for five minutes, please.
We are back from recess at 8:35. We have one more item on the agenda. It is Item 5C, 2019-434, Income and Expense Report Penalty. This is on page 12. Council Baumgartner?
Read the recommended action. It's a discussion to consider whether or not to move forward with the town ordinance. The ordinance would allow a waiver of a 10% penalty for income and expense reports which were filed late or incomplete with the assessor's office.
Do we need a second on that?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, so, we have...
Cindy Landry, Finance Director, and with me today, I have Mary Gardner, Assessor, and Chuck Stevens, who is the Chairman of the BAA, who had originally, I think, contacted the council about this, is also here.
Thank you. I wanted to recognize him, thank you for doing so.
Okay, the state statutes allow, well, let me back up and say, the state statutes require that any owner of rental-producing property must file with the assessor an income and expense report annually each year by June 1st. The statute also allows, if the body, the town were to adopt an ordinance, we could waive a 10% penalty that is required if that form is not filed by June 1st. So, I'm going to let Mary take over to explain to you the processes that we follow, a little bit more about the statute, and then we'll be, I'll give you my comments at the end, and we can have a discussion.
Good evening. So, we are required by statute to send out the income and expense surveys, and property owners of rental property are required by statute to return them by June 1st. Rental properties would be properties that produce income, and they are appraised on the income approach. So, this would be for hotels, shopping centers, marinas, apartments, mixed-use, anything that is an income-producing property. And the reason we collect the surveys is because it gives us the market trends for rent, market trends for vacancy, for expense ratios. We need that information when we perform the five-year evaluations to appraise income-producing properties. So, the statute requires assessors to send out the forms by April 15th, and in the form, there is an instruction letter that lets property owners know that they can request an extension as long as they request it before May 1st, and then the forms are due back by June 1st. We send out about 350 forms a year. We, on average, penalize about 15% of the accounts every year. It is a one-time 10% assessment penalty. The penalty is applied towards the real estate, so if, whatever the assessment is on the real estate, it's a 10% added assessment penalty to that one-year tax bill. We, moving forward, would just want the opportunity to consider waiving penalties under certain circumstances, and that really is the purpose for us being here tonight.
I think this has come up over the course of the years on a couple of different occasions, and we've never moved forward with pursuing an ordinance. I have a couple of points that I wanted to make out. I understand why the assessor would need this information, but I just have some other, kind of like the other side or devil's advocate, that I'd like the council to consider when they make the decision. The statute timeline is, is very clear. You know, we mail it to them by April 15th, they have until May 1st to request an extension, and it's due back by June 1st. And this, to me, this is no different than remembering to file your federal taxes or your state taxes, or pay your mortgage, or your car loan. And if you don't do those by the deadline, you're assessed a penalty. And the taxpayers, again, they can ask for an extension in, in May, and if the council were to pursue, continue, or wish to pursue an ordinance for this, I'd like to see that the sole discretion of the waiver be with the assessor's office and not necessarily with the BAA. While we do have a long-term members of the BAA now, the makeup of that could change, and differences of opinions related to the waivers could occur. So, if you do decide, I would like to word the ordinance very, we'd like to have input into the wording of the ordinance to make sure it's what the town of Grotton wants.
Okay. And I had forwarded some background information from the assessor to all of you in your email. We have a couple of councilors with questions, Council Heed, and then Council Zepary.
The first one, why is it, like, you mail it out on April 15th and it's due back, or a request would have to be made by May 1st?
That's the language of the statute.
That's the state statute.
Yes, it is.
All right. And then you clarified one, it's 10% assessment of the amount assessed, so if a property is worth 300,000 and the assessment is making this up $300, then it's $30.
If the assessment is 300,000, the penalty assessment would be 30,000 times the mill rate, so it's a 10% increase in their tax bill, that one year.
All right. Final question, you said you mail out 350 per year, and 150 are coming back late?
About 50 are coming back late.
Fifty, okay.
15%.
Oh, right, 51. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Zepary, and then Council Atwater.
Now, this is for rental property, that you're looking for the net rents that come in. On other types of commercial property, say, for an office property, do you look for the profit, profits that the company is making in that office?
Not in the office. It's really for the landlord. What rents are the landlord charging?
Well, I, you know, I didn't understand this as I, so I looked up the statutes. Okay? And 12-63B says that there are three ways you can do the assessment.
Yes.
And you may do it based on the rents collected, but you may also do it based on the value of the property.
The value of the property.
Well, I can read the three ways to you, if you want me to, from the statute.
I have the statute too. What, what do you mean by the value of the property?
Well, it says, replacement cost, less depreciation, plus the market value of the land. And the second way is capitalization, capitalization of net income based on market rent for similar property. And a sales comparison approach based on the current bona fide sales of comparable property, that's what you do with the other property.
Right.
So, you have your choice of doing any of those three.
You do.
And so, it's not something that you must do, it's something that you may do, right?
The problem is...
And why did you, why did you settle on this particular method over the other two?
Sure. The cost approach is where you break everything down by the actual physical cost of the structure plus the value of the land. The value of the land would come from market sales. Sales comparison approach would be, you have properties of similar type and use that sell within your area, and income approach is taking rents minus expenses, capitalizing, using a cap rate, converting that into, taking your income stream and converting that into a value. For the cost approach, it's very cumbersome, and we do study the cost approach, we do work up cost approaches for, during every revaluation, we have cost schedules. And that, you would deduct your depreciation to get to a market value. For a sales comparison approach, for commercial properties, they don't occur. Very infrequently do you have a shopping center that sells? Do you have a hotel that sells? And remember, with our revaluation, our market is Grotton. We don't get to look at Stonington or New London or Norwich, we only get to focus on property sales in Grotton. So, the best way, and the primary way that properties are appraised, is through the income approach, if you're talking about income, income-producing properties. If you were a certified appraiser, you would not necessarily focus on the cost, you would consider it in your appraisal report, you would consider the sales comparison report, but you would focus on the income approach, because that is the most accurate way to get a taste or a flavor of what the market is.
Thank you. That sounds reasonable.
Okay. You got the whole answer.
My whole problem that I have in my heart is that it creates a separate class of people whose property is appraised differently from the other property owners in the town. Now, you've given a good reason why we should do it that way, and I think that we, you know, I can support that. But, I am concerned about creating separate classes of people for any reason.
For those property owners, if they were to sell their property, their appraiser, I 100% guarantee would use the income approach to value to make an appraisal of market value for that property to put it up for sale.
Yeah.
Council Atwater?
Before I address the women, I have a question, I guess, for the town manager or whatever, in the going back over what you had sent out, Mayor. The Board of Assessment Appeals made a decision back in March 23rd at a meeting, that they felt that they would like to pursue this. And then there were some emails back and forth, April 4th, and so, their questions, was it time-sensitive, and to know it would be taken up with the cow and so forth, at the next cow. And now, here we are, the 24th or 5th of June or something, beyond the date of June 1st, which is when this all takes place. Why did we wait so long? What was...
Couple of reasons. First of all, ordinance, as you know, takes months to do. We couldn't do it by June 1st anyways. It was just to take a...
Right, but still...
Our assessor was in Japan on family business. We couldn't, it didn't line up to have staff actually here until now. But, again, you wouldn't have had it done by June 1st anyways, no matter what you did.
Next year, make sure she doesn't go to Japan.
Yeah. For some reason.
Okay. I do have...
Even if we would have went immediately, you would not, you wouldn't have had it done. Because by, you know, it takes a couple, three months. Well, first of all, right, it's going to take two to three months at least. Then you go through our process, you go through the RTM process, and then it's 45 days after. It's, you know, not going to be in a RTM. So, we're talking at least a six-month process.
Okay. And then, and then some questions about the mechanics or whatever, I guess, and so forth. In the mayor's email, there was listings of, from 2013 through 2018, of what the, I don't know if they were the assessed values or the penalties, I'm assuming they were the taxes or whatever, and the number of accounts. And in particularly, 2018 shows $5,240 on three accounts, and yet, in the information we have here, there was 51 accounts for $183,000, and I don't know where the...
So, the, the lower number that you're talking about, we sort of targeted and said, if we were to extend the waiver date, say, seven or eight days, based on the accounts that had not filed in the last few years, what would that tax loss, like I should say, revenue loss be? And that's what the $5,000 is, that those small amounts are just, if, if we had the right to waive, say, if someone filed it maybe six or seven or eight days late, that's the amount of tax that we would not be collecting for that particular grant list. We were trying to give an example of, of what we would not be collecting.
So, so the, the...
So, to waive the penalty means that we're not collecting as much tax.
So, the waiver is not across the board, it's discretionary, so that it wouldn't necessarily be, everybody that was late would get a waiver?
So, what I would like to see is the function of my office and to do the right thing and to do well by the town, but also administer this program, would be to limit the amount of time, and it would be for anyone who filed within that amount of time. The statute says it has to be for good cause. I don't want to be the one who determines what's good cause and what's not good cause, I just don't know how you do that. But, I would say, if you gave us a file, because our goal is to get the data, we need the data to do the revaluation, but, just to try to limit a little bit of that scope, because there's a lot of opportunity to understand the program, and we send the forms out to the same people every single year. So, trying to wrap our arms around what would be a decent amount of time to waive, and that, that was what we came up with, maybe seven or eight days. Anybody who filed late within that time would have, be granted the waiver. If you did not file at all, we would not grant the waiver. It would just be if you filed late.
Okay. If we look at the different years that were given to us, there were 15 accounts in 2013, 22 accounts in '14, and then it dropped off to 3273. Are many of those what I would call repeat offenders? Do you get some people that are just chronically late?
Yes, we, we have one property owner that refuses to file. He's not filed on his properties in 20 years, and every year pays the late penalty and is very aware of it, but, you know, in his mind, he, he doesn't want to share the information of the real estate. But, yes, a lot of, a lot of accounts are repeat, just can't seem to get it together. Sometimes it's somebody who misses it by one day, and, you know, it, it's hard to say you're one day late, but that is the statute.
Okay. I guess then, since it's a discussion to recommend things or whatever, my personal feeling is that you're sending this out, and included in it, from what I understand, is a letter saying that you can file for an extension.
Oh, yes.
And that's giving them plenty of opportunity.
Oh, yeah.
And I understand, Mary, where you need this information and so forth, but if you're getting 350, or you're getting 300 out of 350 requests, I would think from that number, you could still get a sense of what the real estate market is, you don't need the 350. So, my feeling would be that we don't have an ordinance and give them any extension at all. That's, that's my opinion.
The statute requires us to penalize. We have no option. We have no option to waive. The Board of Assessment Appeals has no option to waive.
So, we have Council Freyko, and then Council Heed had a follow-up, and then I wanted to see if Chairperson Stevens wanted to comment.
So, did, you came before us with this before, didn't you?
I don't know if I came before you, I think it might have gone through Cindy and the town manager. Did I come before you?
There were four emails, about a year ago. About similar time a year, a year ago.
Because I do recall us discussing this in here, and we were having the same questions about whether, what the timeframe is, and, you know, what is one day late compared to the ninth day late? You know, if you gave them an extension of eight days?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I do recall this coming before us before, so that's why I'm sort of curious why it's back again. And that's why when, before we came back, I said... And that's why when, before we came back, I said, this was already before us, we've already talked about this.
I've been before you for the audit program, personal property audit program, and I don't, I don't recall coming for it, come an expense, no.
No, this is the first time I've ever put a referral to the council.
A year ago, I put it in my town manager's report, because we had received a request or two, and there were some email dialogues, just some questions of follow-up, but I've never, I've never addressed it here though.
I do recall discussing a penalty waiver of this. And because I, the reason I'm recalling this is because I receive these at where I work, and we have to fill them out. And there's, you have to have them back in time, and-
Right, I mean, it-
There were some people that were worried about, like, what mom and pa would do, because they don't have an accountant, and what do they do? When it's their responsibility to fill these out, so-
Yeah, it's the same responsibility if it's a, if it's a rental-producing property. And we go out of our way to help people. And, we even, when we sign the grand list for real estate accounts, statute says, if your assessment increases, we are required by statute to notify the owner of the old assessment and the new assessment, and give them the opportunity to appeal to the Board of Assessment Appeals. We took that format, and we created a template for income and expense penalty owners, and we sep, we send them the regular assessment notice, but we also target them and send them a separate assessment notice, just to say, this is a notice, your property, you know, late or, or non-filing of the income and expense form, this is a one-time penalty, you can appeal it to the board. Really, they, this is part of Chuck's frustration, is we do have to let them know that they can appeal it to the board, but the board has no power to waive it. And when we take applications for the board and they're appealing the INE penalty, we tell them that too. Because we feel that they don't want to go to the board and be told by the board they can't adjust the penalty, at least we need to give them the opportunity to appeal, but they have no power to remove it. So, it, it's a cycle, but we have gone out of our way to try to get the constant nonfilers to file the form, I don't know what else we could do. It's, we'll help you fill it out, we'll walk you through it, we just need the information.
But the nonfilers would not, would still receive the penalty?
Yes, yeah, it's only the late-
It's only the incomplete that would be, that the ordinance would cover?
Right.
You also said, this has been brought forward before, and it's never moved forward.
That was last year, in March of last year.
Yeah, I think it also came up in 2014 with the prior town manager and finance director, and they did not move it forward either.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens is here, would you like to hear the Board of Assessment Appeals rationale for why they are requesting this, or do you just want to move on with questions and discussion with town staff?
I just have a short-
Well, we have, Counselor Heed also has questions to come back again. Okay?
Are we gonna invite him up, or?
I just did, but no one else seemed-
I'm seconding you.
Okay. Chairman Stevens, would you please come up? Thank you for coming out this evening, and I think it's important for us to hear why you started this process, and what you faced, and so that we can make a better decision.
I would refer you to the memo that you received dated March 25 of this year from the BAA, that basically reviewed the information and the difficulty that we run into when taxpayers come to us with arguments that, under equity and good conscience, we might be willing to waive the penalty because of particular individual circumstances. But we share the frustration that they come to us, and we listen to their appeal, and at the end, we say, well, we understand the penalty and the impact, and we understand your reasoning as to why you missed that deadline, but as sympathetic as we might be to your argument, we can only do anything if there's a local ordinance, and a local ordinance doesn't exist. And if you were that taxpayer, you would understand that, that frustration of going to that time and trouble, coming in, making your case, having your case sort of accepted by the Board of Assessment Appeals, but their hands are tied, because there is no local ordinance to give the BAA that authority. I would point out, we're not asking for that authority, we are supporting giving the waiver authority to the assessor. There was a previous proposal made to the town council to provide, I think there was a draft resolution that would give that authority to the, the assessor, and we support that. The penalty is proper and necessary, and we support that, we certainly don't support blanket waivers of the penalty. But there are cases where it would be reasonable and appropriate, but without lack of a local ordinance, there's nothing that can be done. And that's all summarized in the memo you had dated March 25. Thank you.
Counselor Overy hasn't spoken yet, she wanted to-
Cindy, would you kind of clarify your position on this again?
You're asking for my position?
No, Cindy-
Director Landry?
I'm sorry.
I understand the assessor's desire and need for the information, but there is a part of me that feels there's, the taxpayer has ample opportunity to ask for an extension, and these are taxpayers that, as Mary said, they don't turn over a lot, they're, it's year after year after year. You don't forget to file your state income tax, you don't forget to file your federal income tax. And my fear is we'll see an influx of people that don't meet the June 1st deadline, and hopefully think that they can get a waiver, because as Mary said, it's very difficult to, to establish criteria, it's difficult, it would be difficult for the BAA to decide on a case-by-case basis, what criteria are we gonna use to, to waive each individual case? So, I'm, I'm really, I'm torn on this issue.
And you would prefer to have the ability to make a decision?
I would prefer to have the information.
I'm sorry?
I would prefer to have the information, I'd like the INE survey.
Mary would like to have, if she could get this information, if you didn't file, you were a couple of days late, and you could get her the information, if she could waive your penalty, she'd rather have the information. But I'm not quite sure how many people are going to come in and say to her, "I'll file if you waive my penalty."
I didn't think of that.
So, so I have, before we go back to second time, I have a question, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought I heard the assessor say, you did not want to be the one to make the decision whether to waive, and I thought I heard the chairperson say, the Board of Assessment Appeals did not be the, want to be the ones to decide whether to waive it or not, so who will be the one to decide?
Well, what I, what I said was, the statute says that you can waive it for good cause. What I don't want to do is have to determine what is good cause. What's good cause to one taxpayer is not good cause to another taxpayer. What I would prefer is a very limited window of time to it-
By a week or so.
By a week. And then anyone who files within that time period, I would waive their penalty.
So, there would not be this list of potentially good causes, it would just be simply a matter of extending a time limit?
Yes.
And you would be comfortable with that?
I would.
Okay, thank you. So, Counselors Zepary and Heed both have follow-up questions, unless another counselor wasn't spoken yet, it was just two?
There was, there was a little concern for the mom-and-pop operation, and as I read the statute, I saw that the mom-and-pop operation, that is, if someone lives in the property, that they have rental property in, and has no more than six rental units, then they are exempted from the requirements of the statute.
That is for five-family unit home, or a six-family unit home, if they live in one of the units. It's not for a retail spot down on the first floor and five apartments upstairs, it's not that. That, that is only for six-family homes, five-family homes.
Yeah, and, and it makes a difference whether or not the, the owners live on the first floor or the top floor?
No, it doesn't, what, what I tried to give an example of is the type of mixed-use property, and a good example of a mixed-use property is maybe two rental, two retail spaces on the ground floor, and maybe four apartments upstairs, there's actually six units there. That would be, or, they would have to file an income and expense form. The, this section of the statute you're referring to is a six-family home.
Right.
Where maybe the property owner lives in one unit. We do not send those property owners, we don't send them income and expense forms, we've already taken those out of the system.
I just wanted to be sure that we're doing that.
Yes.
Then we're really not worried about the mom-and-pop operation, because anything bigger than that is not a mom-and-pop operation.
Okay.
Counselor Heed?
All right, I, a couple of questions just to get some perspective. First of all, full disclosure, my dad has been in real estate for decades, and I can tell you, if he sees an opportunity to extend, he, he will. Because that's how it goes. But anyways, that being said, I did the math, and it appears 14% of the, um, um, forms are returned late. How does that compare to, say, your normal tax forms? Is it, like, for residential, is it normally 2%? Is this even a comparable percentage to, does it make sense to, to put that question out there?
When you say "normal tax forms," what is that? Tax bills?
Well, yeah, how, how late are people usually on their, their filing taxes?
Filing taxes?
Paying car taxes, you mean?
Being late, um, doing anything late, like, is it, is 14% normal, is it usually like 4%? Is it, is this unusually high?
I'm not the tax collector, I don't know what her collection rate, well, her collection rate is 98% at the end of the fiscal year. But that's out of 70,000 accounts.
I think your question is asking how many people pay on August 2nd for the tax, and I, I don't have that information, but if they don't pay by August 1st, there is no opportunity to waive that, by statute, they just have to pay the interest.
All right. Second question would be, I guess, is there an opportunity to do graduated penalties? Like, first seven days, you, you could have half of that waived, the next seven days be a quarter?
If you wanted to structure it that way, that's a lot of calculations. I would prefer it either exist or not exist, either the ordinance exists or it doesn't exist.
With a seven-day window?
With a, a limited window, yeah.
Okay. And last one, just out of curiosity, what are some of the reasons given?
Last year, there was a property owner, the, the forms are mailed to the property owner, because that's the only mailing address we store in the record. Who they give it to is up to them, their accountant, their property manager, whomever. We had a property last year that the property manager, who is the company the property owner hires to manage the rents, filed it a day late, and it, it, I got phone calls from everybody. I got phone calls from everybody in the town structure saying, you, you know, it's just not fair to penalize this account, you know, it's what the statutes say. And it, the property owner blamed the management company, the management company blamed the wife of the property owner, it, it just went back and forth. It's usually not that sticky, but sometimes it, it takes on a life of its own. So, sometimes it's, they, they didn't receive it, we don't know why they didn't receive it, their tax bills get paid, everything else that we mailed, you know, we hear all kinds of reasons why the forms aren't filed on time. But what I can tell you is, we're required by statute to send them out April 15th, we usually get them out within a week before then. We have an instruction letter that describes the whole process, talks about, if you need an extension, you can request it by May 1st. Talks it, in the letter, two or three times, it talks about the penalty, I mean, we, we try really hard to notify people. So, we, we hear all kinds of reasons why.
So, Counselor Baumgartner and Counselor Schmidt have not spoken on this yet, before I take any more repeats, I'm gonna ask if they would like to speak. Counselor Schmidt, did you want to say anything?
No.
Counselors Zepary, back to you.
I'm sorry?
You had your hand up?
Yes. I'm wondering, you know, right now, we don't know whether we're gonna do this or not, because we don't have a clear recommendation from the people who have to deal with it, whether or not we should have such an ordinance for a waiver. And we did hear from, from you, sir, that you have a problem doing your job, because it doesn't make any difference what you decide, they've already missed the, the deadline, and they're stuck with a penalty. Is that, am I getting the quite right read on what you said?
The BAA has found it frustrating to have people be given the right to appeal something where we are prohibited by, from making a decision on their appeal, because there is no enabling ordinance, there is no local ordinance. So, that has been, we have to hear their appeal, and in occasional cases, it's not every case, but occasionally, someone will have a reason why they missed the deadline. And it is typically someone who has filed their form faithfully for years, and for whatever reason, a health issue, a change of management issue, whatever, the form isn't filed timely, the penalty's applied, they come to us, and we say, yes, we understand, but there's no local ordinance, so, thank you for coming in, we can't do a thing. And we have found that to be frustrating, and it is all because there is no local ordinance giving the assessor and/or the Board of Assessment Appeals the ability to waive the penalty.
Would it be, you know, I, I don't know where to go from here, you're, you're in the trenches working with this, could the three of you propose a, an ordinance, and we could consider it?
My understanding is there was a previously drafted ordinance that was proposed.
There may have been a resolution at one point, but the statute requires an ordinance, and there is no statute at this point drafted. It's a lot of work, it's a couple months of work, it's a lot of legal fees, we would want a pretty good idea if you're interested in moving forward, before we do that.
I personally, I, I personally don't like the idea of our having a Board of Appeals that can't handle an appeal, because there's some sort of glitch in our procedural law that prevents them from making a reasonable decision. So, if we're not gonna have a Board of Appeals, okay, but if we have a Board of Appeals, they should be able to do what they're there to do.
Just to make it clear, though, the proposal would not enable the, the Board to make the, they've agreed that they think the assessor's office should make that decision, or have a, as she said, have a, just a extension of the time period.
Well, the thing is, that still leaves the Board of Appeals without the ability to complete its job. And, and that's the thing I'm concerned about.
They're not really prohibited from completing their job, or not able to complete it, it's just that they, it's frustrating, because-
Well, he just said he can't do it, because there's no way of, there's no way for him to get it done.
Well, the state statute is, says that we would have to act in order for whomever we chose to waive the penalty. It would not be the Board of Assessment Appeals, it would be town staff, is from the discussion I've heard. My, my question is, how valuable to you is it? Is it the amount of money that you would lose if it was extended between $2,000 and $40,000 a year? How, is that worth the amount of information you would get?
It, yes, I mean, to, to me, the data is more important than anything, but I, I don't think you can waive every penalty, I think we have to live by what the statute says. This is, that we, to appraise income-producing properties, you need to know what the market rents are, what the market is telling you. The last revaluation, we had the data, the next revaluation, markets change, you, you need to capture whatever the current trend is. We are getting a lot of information from the people who do file the forms. This is a way to get a few more forms for the people who file late within a really short period of time.
Counselor Franco had a follow-up.
So, as the Board of Assessment Appeals, what, do you have other appeals that come to you? Other people come to you for issues with their assessment?
I'm sorry, say, say again.
So, people come to you with assessment issues, and you're the Board of Appeals, maybe they think they were taxed too high, or they don't agree with the numbers, or they have some kind of change in their situation. This isn't the only type of appeal that comes to you, is that correct?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, absolutely. Absolutely. This is a very small portion of the workload that we receive. Basically, we handle motor vehicles, business, personal property, and real estate. So this is a very minor issue to the overall work of the BAA. But it is an issue that we have found mildly frustrating. And if we -- if there was an ordinance and the -- it was given to the assessor to have the opportunity to waive the penalty, that would take that burden off of us because we would basically say we, you know, the ability to waive the penalty sits with the assessor. Assessor made a decision. We can't change that decision. We're not going to change that decision.
So right now, somebody can come to you and ask for an appeal of the--
Of the penalty.
Of this penalty. But why do you -- if we don't have an ordinance, why do you accept that appeal?
Because the information that they receive from the town says if you disagree with the decision, you have the right to file an appeal with the BAA.
So if we have a penalty, can we remove the wording that you can file an appeal?
I'm not sure what the statute says, whether they are entitled to still file an appeal even though we can't render a decision because there's no local ordinance.
So on the state statute, does it state that they have the right to appeal a late fee or a penalty, shall I say? Because this might just be resolved by removing wording.
Well, I'm going to take a flyer in the dark here. But the town has to notify them that their taxes have increased.
Right.
Because of the penalty. And I think that automatically includes appeal language.
But they can appeal an increase in their taxes, but they may not be able to, if the wording is--
Could it be spelled out in the letter?
Can be spelled out properly saying that the penalty cannot be appealed.
So the state statute, 1263 C.D., says such assessor or board may waive such penalty upon receipt of such information in any town in which the legislative body adopts an ordinance allowing for such a waiver. So we can't change that. The only thing we can do is either adopt an ordinance or not adopt an ordinance. And that's what we have to figure out if we want to do tonight is whether we want to adopt an ordinance or not.
But the instruction letter could be spelled out.
That's not what I was talking about. I was talking about, does the state actually say that they have the right to appeal?
It does. It does. So the statute is 1263 C. And in paragraph C at the end--
I think that's what I just read, if I'm not mistaken. But go ahead.
In paragraph C, at the last sentence, "Any person claiming to be aggrieved by the action of the assessor hereunder may appeal the actions of the assessor to the Board of Appeals, and superior court is otherwise provided in the chapter." So they do have the right to--
In reference to the penalty, or is that in reference to the tax?
The penalty.
I meant.
The penalty. This statute is all about the income and expense form.
All right. Thank you.
So everyone who's wanted to speak has spoken at least once. We need to have some kind of consensus for staff. We have conflicting opinions from staff. We have the board that would like one thing. So we need to come to a decision and see what you would like to do with this. Counselor Head, Counselor O'Bree?
I'd be willing to support a short window, seven to 14 days. And I don't think we'd necessarily be urgent to do it right now, for example.
May I go to the manager?
Sure.
Just, do you want my opinion?
Yes.
I see both sides, but I support a short window. However, maybe some language that says for the repeat people that take advantage of it, maybe you say you can't -- it doesn't get waived in consecutive years or something of that nature.
Counselor O'Bree?
Do we have to go through the whole process in order to be able to do that?
An ordinance has to be adopted.
Pardon me?
An ordinance has to be adopted.
So we're going to have to go through the process of the attorneys and et cetera in order to make that change?
I'm hoping we'll find, so far, we have not found a good one, example in another town to use. But we keep looking to see if there's a base to start with.
You know, I'll tell you myself, I paid the fine one year.
I remember.
I swore she didn't send it to me.
I remember. But did it teach you a lesson?
Pardon me?
Did it teach you a lesson?
Yes, it did. Absolutely. I don't fill it out anymore. Somebody else, I send it. Actually, that's the part that I have to say, that it really does make you stand up and realize there's something you have to do, and it has to be done on time. I wouldn't have a problem with that small window. I'm just wondering, for the small number that probably are going to be really affected by it, is it really worth the cost of what we're going to have to go through to do it? But, you know, when it's due, it's due. Although I beg at your windows all the time, so.
Mr. Burt, did you want to speak?
I just had a question. How long can you extend, if they request the extension, how long can you extend the time period?
I think we can maybe go to July 1. I'd have to, I'd have to look. Let me see. I just got new glasses. I'm having a hard time reading with them. 30 days.
But I think that our discussions is we wanted to have a very narrow window because it's not--
I wasn't implying I want to do a 30-day window.
I think there's just a little more pain for the people that come in the day after it's due.
Right.
That's, that's the hard one.
I'm sure that was me.
I think I remember talking with you at the counter, Leanne, yeah. You know.
So what is the consensus? Counselor Otter?
I just have one question. You say when you send out the letter, you spell out very clearly that they have the right to file for an extension and so forth. Is it legal or possible to put something in that letter that says that if you do not follow this or pay this or whatever, there is no appeal? Because, I mean, in essence, there is no appeal. They can go through the process and nothing happens. So if you tell them ahead of time, at least they don't then feel that they have that option and they don't take up the time of the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Maybe worded like there's no, we do not have authority to waive the, you know, penalty. You know, they can appeal, but make it clear we don't have that authority.
I could put something in writing that says the board, you know, has no right to waive the penalty. Neither does the assessor without an ordinance or, you know, something like that. I, because the statute talks about an appeal, I don't think I would ever deny someone an appeal to the board. And people come to the counter upset because they're just recognizing they're going to have a 10% penalty. They, you know, how can I appeal this? We tell them they can appeal it to the board. However, we also tell them, you have to understand the board has no authority to waive the penalty. But we would never bar you from an appeal. You have your right to appeal always. But we could word it in a way.
I guess my feeling is that, as Counselor Franco said, that it, so you give them seven days, 14 days, and they come in on the 15th day or whatever. I, it just seems like--
I know. That's, that's the, that's the balance. We're, you know, lots of assessors don't even want to waive the penalty. I'm not even sure I always want to waive the penalty. And dear God, we hear all kinds of stuff at the counter. We have big shoulders. We can bear a lot in the office. But there are times when I know the board has been just so frustrated, and I know that we have tried our best. You know, we just can't try any harder, to be honest.
Okay. So we have Counselors Zepary and O'Bree, both of us to speak again.
I feel that if there's an issue of justice involved, and there's an appeal process available to resolve that issue, that we should not penalize anyone for using the appeal process. And the appeal process should be effective. And it is not just so much a concern for the, for a few people who might be affected. It's a concern for preserving the process where we preserve justice. And I think somehow or other, we have to work it out so that when someone brings an appeal and the appellate board feels that there's been an error before it, that the person who brought the appeal should not be penalized. And I'm in favor of having an ordinance only because I'm in favor of preserving fairness in the way we do our job in this town.
I agree. And the fairness is that they are required by statute to report this data, and they need to do it. So I agree.
Counselor O'Bree?
Just another clarification. It's not you that puts this on. You're being told you have to charge this amount if somebody's late.
The statutes tell us we must do it.
And they determine how much?
The statutes say 10%. And understand, the statute is in place so that we can perform our job.
Yeah.
Without this data, and appraisers have access to this data, we do not. And so we have to compel property owners to provide this information. It is not open for disclosure. Nobody can FOI it. It stays in a very safe spot. Nobody is allowed to look at it but us and the revaluation company.
Anyone else? Counselor Schmidt?
I feel if we tell people they have the right to appeal, then there has to be a process that is an appeal and it's a legitimate appeal. Otherwise, we have to be able to tell them that there is no process. We can't have it both ways. It's just catch 22. And there are too many state situations that are like that.
Director Liger?
I think that we tell the taxpayers, because we don't want to say you can't appeal or you shouldn't appeal because there's no avenue for justice, so to speak. So I think that's why the taxpayers are, they're told you have, you can appeal to the BANA, but it's made very clear to them that the BAA has no authority to waive the penalty. So it is kind of like a catch 22 because we don't want to say to them, no, you can't appeal. You can, but you won't get any resolution.
And remember, the penalty is because they either didn't file or they filed late, according to the statute. So it's not a, it's not a money grab on our part. We're just executing what the statutes tell us to do. I'm sure. I'm positive.
So because you've said you value the data that could be collected by having the ability to waive the penalty, I could support a seven-day extension. Counselor Otter?
Just a clarification. Once they go to the Board of Assessment Appeals and they're told that they, they have no power, can they then appeal it to state appellate court or judicial, whatever court higher than, than the town?
We've been to court on INE penalties, sure.
So they, so they do have recourse?
They do. Because basically, the board denies--
It's just not at the town level.
Basically, the board denies their appeal. Which kicks in the next level of Superior Court.
The recourse is to Superior Court. And to file in Superior Court, you have to pay $450. At that point, someone looks like he's got a penalty of what, 200 bucks, 300 bucks? You're going to pay $450 just to argue it in court? I just, I don't think there really is a course of going beyond the appellate court here, a reasonable course for people.
Okay. So do other counselors wish to voice their opinion on this? There are three that have said we'd be okay with a seven-day window. Anyone else wish to speak, or should we take that as you're not interested in person? Counselor Baumgartner?
I'm okay with the seven-day window.
That's four of us.
But the thing is, for that four-day window, you're going to have to go through whatever the, seven days or whatever. You're going to have to go through this whole process.
Right. That's, that was the caveat that the manager pointed out. Cindy?
I just wanted to add that I don't want us to be pinned to that seven days at this point. If you decide to go forward with the ordinance, we wanted to have input in putting together so that we don't run into, if the seventh day is a Sunday, we want to really be specific on this.
Yes.
So I wouldn't want you to say seven days.
That's fine. I was just using that as--
A timeframe.
Counselor O'Bree, back to you.
I just, I just feel, I'm really torn on this because for me, it just made me get better with what I was doing. I, it just seems to me that the expense doesn't really warrant the outcome.
Okay. So then we have four and one. We have three other counselors. We don't have a majority. You're opposed. So four and two. Counselor Head and Franco, do you have an opinion on this?
I'm opposed.
Opposed?
I'm in favor. I mean, our staff and volunteers are frustrated by the current situation. We should, we should address it, give them a little bit of room.
So we have one, two, three, we have five in consensus to move ahead with an ordinance which would not have criteria listed, but would be based on a time extension. Is that correct? Correct? Okay. Mr. Burt, is that good enough, consensus? Okay. Thank you very much for your time. We appreciate you coming out, and we look forward to your input on the drafting of this as well. Thank you, Mr. Stevens.
Are we going to vote, or it's just?
No. It was just consensus.
Thank you.
All right.
I'll try to, when I start answering questions, we'll vote something.
So we have no review of other agenda items. Is there any other business to come before the call this evening?
Permission to adjourn.
Moved by Baumgartner to adjourn, seconded by Head. All those in favor of adjournment say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So we'll be unanimously with eight counselors, we adjourn.